Good afternoon, everyone, if you'll come to order. It's September 4th, 1 o'clock PM. Let me greet everyone who's in chamber with us today, to my honorable colleagues, our executive staff, to our friends and residents watching on whatever platform you may be watching this afternoon. His honor, the mayor is en route from a previous commitment. So in accordance with charter and our laws, I'll be conducting the meeting until his honor arrives. Good to have you all here. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Williams is delayed. He will be here momentarily. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton?
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Caballero?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman? And Councilmember Rist?
Here.
Thank you.
And in chair's assessment, we do have quorum. I haven't heard, colleagues, have you heard anything from Councilmember Freeman? I'm going to give her some time to arrive. If she doesn't arrive at some later point in the meeting, then we'll go ahead and issue her an excused absence. And we send our best regards and wishes to her. Colleagues, at this time, I'm going to yield for any announcements by members of the council. I'll yield to Councilmember Cook. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here. I just wanted to send out just quick congratulations to Attorney Aaron Miles, who welcomed a new family member into their family. So congratulations to Aaron. And then I'm going to have two things that I have very briefly spoken with some of you about in other matters to raise at that time. And I'm happy to do it, to preview it now or to just do it in other matters, whatever folks feel more comfortable with.
We'll be happy to yield during other matters, if that's all right with you. Councilmember Baker, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here. I look forward to a productive meeting. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Caballero, good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Very quickly, I just want to highlight that we do have our volunteer reception immediately following this work session. So this is a thing that the City Clerk's Office hosts every year. Usually, we do it in December. I think this is the first one we moved to September. And it's a way to honor and highlight the incredible work that residents give to the city of Durham. I think we have 26 boards and commissions in the city? 28 boards and commissions in the city of Durham. And those are all, many of them, maybe not all, many of them are resident-led. And so these are Durham residents who have stepped up and are providing service to the city of Durham. And this is a way to say thank you. So thank you to the City Clerk's Office for organizing that. And thank you for our very wonderful little schedules when tells us what pictures and what time we need to show up. It's very helpful. So thank you, Madam City Clerk and all your staff.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Freeman, good afternoon. Good to see you. Do you have any announcements?
Thank you. Just appreciation for the excused absence on Monday to tend to a family emergency. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Preold, as well. Councilmember Rist, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. Good afternoon, colleagues, staff, folks online. Good to see you all. Yes, I look forward to the volunteer appreciation event this afternoon. Look forward to seeing many of you there. And again, thanks to the clerk for the scorecard, like the minute-by-minute breakdown of where we should be. So appreciate that. Also, just want to say on my biking on the way in, I had a chance to swing by the Museum of Durham History. And I think we have an agenda item later today. Mr. Muklo's here in the audience. Have an agenda item with the museum. I just want to say, like, they've got another amazing exhibit that I just think launched a couple of weeks ago, "Unearthing History: Stories from Gere Cemetery", first-class exhibit. It's worth seeing. Take some time to check that out. So again, thank you so much for the first-class work, small but mighty Durham Museum of History. Really appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, no announcements from me. I'll just associate myself with all of the great comments and observations you've made. At this time, I'm going to yield to our executive staff for any priority items they may have. I'm going to yield now to our city manager. Mr. Manager, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Good to be with you this afternoon. The city manager's office has no priority items. However, I would like to request a few moments to speak during other matters. I'd like to update the council on some, just a schedule of upcoming presentations that I've previewed for the council. And so with your permission, at the end of the meeting, I'll report out on those.
Thank you so much. I'll yield now to our city attorney. Good afternoon, counselor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. It's good to see you. The city attorney's office does not have any priority items. However, I would love to take a point of personal privilege to make a brief introduction, if I might. We have a new addition to our team, Brendan Neal, who is an Associate City Attorney. Several of you have already sent her warm welcome by email. I thank you for that. But wanted her to be able to see the council, you to see her. And she's going to be doing some great work for us for the Finance Department in procurement. She's also going to be working on Technology Solutions, which, as you know, is undergoing a sea change of update and modernization. We're really excited to have Brenda. She is a proud UNC Law grad, 2024, I believe, and comes to us from a fellowship, fresh from a fellowship at Cornell University as a contract person doing that legal work for the university. So we're really excited to have Brenda.
Here, here, on behalf of the city, welcome to the team. Glad you're with us. Thank you.
Growing city attorney's office, huh? New staff, new babies, great stuff.
Yes, sir.
A lot going on in that shop, right? Madam Clerk, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to give the Boarding Committee Report. The mayor's Hispanic Latino committee appointments. The following five individuals have been nominated. Hadi Andino, Josu de Cordova, James T. Ham, Susanna Marciel Armus, and Marinella M. Marsana-McCol. And there's another board that we are staffing at the moment. It's the Durham Housing Board of Commissioners. And the first individual who's been nominated is a previous homeless individual. And her name is Angela R. Holmes. The second nomination is problematic. We have received some correspondence from a public group. And they have indicated that the individual who has applied for the position may not be a resident of the city of Durham. And I have forwarded the information to the city attorney's office. And to make you aware, the City Clerk's Office does do checks on delinquent taxes with the tax administration. We also searched the Durham GIS to determine if the applicant's parcel or address is within the city, the city corporate limits. And we did determine that there was no delinquent tax and that the parcel was, in fact, within the corporate limits. According to the email received, it was determined that the individual is not a resident of the city of Durham. And I did want to ask some direction from the council on this.
Let me, according to the email?
There was an email sent with...
It's an allegation.
It's an allegation, but there was documentation attached to the email.
Have we, but our own vetting, our own vetting and due diligence has yielded what?
We determined there were no delinquent taxes in accordance with the address that was provided. And the GS parcel is within the city of Durham. Apparently, the parcel belongs to the applicant's husband. And that is a commercial address.
All right. I want to be careful how much public airing, because it's an allegation. Why don't we put it on GBA?
GBA, okay.
And we'll move on to the other one.
Okay.
Colleagues, good afternoon.
I would be concerned if you put it on GBA, because you've already made these allegations about a candidate, an applicant.
Appreciate it. I don't know what other recourse we have, because between now and the meeting, if we can do further due diligence, if we need to pull it all together, that's a... But for the purposes of now, that's how we'll dispose. We'll put it on GBA and deal with the other one. Councilmember?
Madam Attorney, do you need any further guidance from us or anything else from us to...
I have not even had an opportunity to review the communications that the clerk sent to me. So I'd like to review that before I can weigh in from where we are.
Just want to make sure that that was clear, that we would love that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. It'll be put on GBA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And then in the future, if there are problems with applicants, can we just say, resolve that? And to the Mayor Pro Tem's point, we need to be careful with how we speak about these matters. So in future, this sometimes happens. Can we just say that there was not a determination made and it needs to be put on GBA and leave it at that? Thank you.
I appreciate it, colleagues. Madam Clerk, you can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem. That is the last nomination I have. I did want to remind you that the photo schedule is at each of your places for the volunteer appreciation reception tonight. And we're looking forward to seeing you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember?
Madam Clerk, also, I know that on the agenda, with the updated boards, committees, commissions, task force, annual attendance reports, are those just updated? Is that the... Want to know what the...
All of the boards and committee attendance reports have been reviewed and updated. If there were any discrepancies in the percentage of meetings attended?
Appreciate that.
There had been a problem with the formula.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. My thanks to the executive staff. At this time now, I'll read to, turn to reading our administrative consent items in our agenda for the day. Of course, it's the prerogative of council members or members of the public to pull an item. Administrative consent items, starting with the City Clerk's Office. Item 1, Durham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners appointment. Item 2, Mayor's Hispanic Latino Committee appointment. Item 3, Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Task Forces, Task Forces Fiscal Year 2024 through 2025 Annual Attendance Reports under Departmental Items from Budget and Management Services Department. Item 4, Contract Agreement with the Museum of Durham History to Provide Funding to Support Museum Operations. Like to pull that? You'd like to pull it? Item 4 is pulled. Continuing on the City-County Emergency Management Department. Item 5, 2025 Eno Hall Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
Did I pull that one?
Item 5 is pulled. Was that Councilmember Baker, Cook?
Cook.
All right. From the City Manager's Office, item number 6, Contract for Grant Assistance with Central Pines Regional Council. Under General Service Department, item 7, 2024 Bond Referendum Project East End and Long Meadow Parks, Long Meadow Parks Construction Manager at Risk CMAR Contract with Balfour Beatty Construction, Holt Brothers Construction, a joint venture.
I pulled that one as well.
Item number 7 is pulled. Item number 8, 12th Amendment to the Assignment Agreement for the DAP Operating Agreement. Item number 9, 2024 Bond Referendum Project East End and Long Meadow Parks Design Contract with Surface 678 PA. Item number 10, Environmental and Street Services, South Renovation Professional Services, Second Amendment with CPL Architects and Engineers PC. Item number 11, WD Hill Combined Enhancements Design Contract with RVE Inc. Under our Office of Economic and Workforce Development, item number 12, Contract for Durham Workforce Development Board, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity ACT Adult and Dislocated Worker Programs with Eckerd Youth Alternative, Inc., doing business as Eckerd Connects. Item 13, Contract for Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act for NC Works Career Center Operation between the city of Durham and Eckerd Youth Alternatives, Inc., doing business as Eckerd Connects.
Pull that one.
Item number 13 is pulled. From our Parks and Recreation Department, item number 14, Use and Possession Agreement for the Community and Family Life and Recreation Center at Lion Park. Planning and Development Department, item 15, Utility Extension Agreement with Welcome Venture Park LLC to Serve Welcome Venture Park Phase 3. From our Technology Solutions Department, item 16, Contract Renewal with Azteca Systems LLC for City Works Software License and Maintenance. Item number 17, Contract for Audit of City's Primary Telecommunications Service Accounts. Under our Transportation Department, item 18, First Amendment to Supplemental Agreement Number 4 to Master Agreement Number 18919 with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. for Design of Horton Road Multi-Use Path and Sidewalk Gaps, TIP BL-0063.
Just want to say, great stuff, really important work.
I concur. Item number 19, FY 2025 through 26 Transit Capital Improvement Plan, CIP Budget Ordinance Amendment.
Also, Mayor Pro Tem, just on that one, I don't want to pull it, but just say thanks to the county. This is important funding from the County Transit Plan to support buses and bus traffic transit. So glad to see that. Thanks again to the county.
Also adding thanks to the Go Triangle Board as well.
Absolutely. Under our Water Management Department, item number 20, Award of Contract Extension for Routine Generator Maintenance and Emergency Repair Services from National Power LLC. This afternoon, presentations from our Finance Department, item number 21, Fiscal Year 2024 through 25, Fourth Quarter Financial Report. This presentation is slated to go 15 minutes. And from our Water Management Department, item number 22, Western Intake Partnership Project Update. This is a presentation slated to go 30 minutes. And for Citizens Matters to be heard at 1 PM, I have one pre-registered citizen, DeWarren Langley of the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation. That ends the reading of our published agenda for the day. I have items pulled, item number 4, 5, 7, and 13. Mr. Manager, do you concur? Right, colleagues, we'll go, we'll handle these in order. Then we'll go up to item number 4. I believe Councilmember Baker, you pulled that? I'm sorry. You're right. Citizens' comments. Is Mr. Langley? Thank you, colleagues. Mr. Langley? Mr. Langley, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, good afternoon, man. Thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. I'm DeWarren Langley. I serve as the volunteer executive director of the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation, which is an impactful, impact-driven nonprofit organization committed to advancing equity and opportunity for boys and young men of color through competency-based learning, strategy-centered mentorship, and career-focused skill development. Our mission is to dismantle systemic barriers and expand pathways to academic achievement, careers, economic mobility, and leadership. At the foundation, we believe that when we invest in the skill development, coaching, and career exploration of boys and young men of color, we do not just shape futures, we transform lives. The Career Pathway Program was created with this vision in mind to prepare young men with the tools, guidance, and opportunities they need to thrive academically, professionally, and civically. Consider the journey of one young man we recently supported, who connected with me in February of 2025 after my public advocacy before the Durham City Council for greater investment in youth development and career exploration. Inspired, he reached out. But like many recent college graduates, he was struggling to secure meaningful employment. Through the Career Pathway Program, we walked alongside him step by step. Together, we revised his resume, clarified his career goals, strengthened his interviewing skills, and applied for relevant opportunities. His growth extended beyond employment readiness. Knowing his interest in land use and policy, I encouraged him to apply for the Durham Planning Academy. He was accepted. From there, his civic engagement deepened. He was appointed as an at-large member of the City-County Appearance Commission by the Durham Board of County Commissioners. This was not only a professional milestone, but also a powerful affirmation that young men of color belong in spaces where decisions are made and futures are shaped. Ultimately, he secured a full-time entry-level technology role in Research Triangle Park, earning $52,000 a year. With steady employment, civic leadership, and a clear career trajectory, he is now on a path of economic stability and mobility. That is what transformation looks like. The impact of the Career Pathway Program is clear. When boys and young men of color have access to coaching, mentoring, and professional development, they can move from uncertainty to purpose, from underemployment to thriving careers, from the margins to meaningful civic leadership. Our charge is urgent. Without intentional investment, too many young men are left vulnerable to undesirable influences. But when we choose to invest, we unlock potential, strengthen communities, and create lasting change. The Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation stand as a bridge, connecting young men of color to skills, opportunities, and networks that will sustain them for a lifetime. And as we've seen, this investment does not just transform one life. It strengthens families, enriches communities, and builds a more just and prosperous future for us all. We invite the city to join us through investment and partnership.
Mr. Langley, thank you so much. We appreciate the work you continue to do in our community. Madam Clerk, that is the only person I had read. All right. All right, we'll now go to the pulled items for real. This time, I think, Councilmember Baker, you pulled item number 4. I'll yield to you.
Thank you. I just, for my own edification, there is a little bit of information in the packet about the location. It's been a matter of conversation over the past several years of the museum. I think currently, as it stands, the current location is seen as the permanent location. But I just wanted to see if there was any update in terms of the conversation around location, especially as we consider adoption at some point of the downtown master plan and some of the opportunities that might be opened up there. Is there still a desire for a new location or open-mindedness for that? Or do you think that the current location is going to be the permanent location?
Christina Riordan, Budget and Management Services. And I'm looking to our city manager. We do have the Museum of Durham History here as well. So I'm not sure if your question is for city or for, you know, the nonprofit itself. So I can...
I think the nonprofit would be good.
Okay. So I will have their director come up and speak.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Great questions. Thank you very much. I would say, to answer your question, we love where we are, being at 500 West Main Street. Councilmember Caballero has been part of a working group the past couple of years to identify and do the due diligence to determine the permanent home for the museum. We are working towards making a recommendation to the city council that, a memo to be submitted soon via Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Caballero, that we would, the recommendation would be to stay where we currently are.
Great. Thank you. That's all that I had. I was curious. Appreciate it.
Thank you, colleagues. Anyone else? Since Director Muklo, good to see you kind of telegraphed it with that request, maybe a request, full disclosure, for just a little bit more money to just under 50 grand. I think maybe coming down the pipe for us. Just want to put that out there. We'll deliberate it. But since you telegraphed it, I want to go ahead and put that out there. Thank you, colleagues. Anyone else on this item? All right, we'll move on to item number 5. Councilmember Cook, I believe you pulled that. I'll yield to you.
Done. Hi. This is, I don't have any very specific questions, but I just think that this is something that's coming up a lot for residents. And so I was hoping that you could just give us on the record a brief overview of the work that you've done with the surrounding municipalities and sort of what this plan means for Durham and sustainability.
Yes. Nate Sanders, Deputy Chief for Emergency Management. The Eno Hall Plan is a regional hazard mitigation plan which involved multiple counties. It's sponsored by the state and it's pretty much, it's covered by the state. WSP was the vendor that the state acquired to do the plan. It included Person, Orange, Durham, Alamance. Am I missing one? And basically, what it does is it identifies the threats and the hazards specific to each county and each area, including the municipalities within Durham. And for us, that's the city of Durham. We identified, or through working with the same stakeholders that were involved within the last Eno Hall mitigation plan, identified the specific threats and hazards to Durham and implemented mitigation plans and processes moving forward to try to address those concerns that were found in the plan. Flooding was a major concern for this one. And we included some wildfire concerns for this one while working with the relative departments that were involved with this. They identified, you know, the specific threats, areas, and the mitigation projects moving forward to help with these. I believe one is building resiliency for city and county facilities, making them more resilient to all hazards-type events and things like that. Adopting the plan, what it does is it allows the city and the county to qualify for any available funding that may be available for this, any state, federal grant, or anything like that. If the, once the plan is adopted, then we are eligible for that funding. Without adopting the plan, then we would potentially not be eligible for any funding for any of these mitigation projects.
Thank you so much. That was a great summary. I appreciate it. Those are all my questions.
I had a question there, yeah. Appreciate it. It's being pulled. Yeah, so there are several new action items on table. 7.11 on page 396. Some of them would come from grant funds. Some of them would come from the county's stormwater utility fee, stream restoration projects. So I'm curious if these are kind of open-ended, if it's sort of a goal or if we already have some specific projects in mind.
So some of the specific projects are going to be up to the individual departments and areas that would apply for that grant funding. Some of those are still open-ended. I know we're working to try to increase our flood awareness. I know we're working to try to increase our flood awareness. We're looking at new gauges specifically for the Eno and try to revamp that process. So there is some specific funding in mind. We haven't obtained that funding yet, but some of these are still open-ended.
Okay.
If that answers your question.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Colleagues, anyone else on this item? All right. Thank y'all. Good to see you.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Councilmember Cook, you're still up. Item number seven.
I'm going to ask some maybe basic questions, but I've read the materials here and I don't really maybe understand what a CMAR service is. And I'm just kind of curious about what we're looking at with this item. Some of these things are very vague, the like, we're assessing and we're, yeah, some of these words are very vague. And they also seem like things that we maybe had already done as part of the bond process. So I was just wondering if you could speak to what more specificity we're getting and sort of what construction manager at risk services are.
Thank you. Chris Lysko, Project Manager for General Services. So construction manager at risk is essentially their partner with us during design phase. We can utilize their resources, their expertise to help us minimize our design risk as far as what cost implications may come with certain aspects, constructability reviews, engaging our trade subcontractors to get them excited and participating in this project. And just the general involvement in management and organization of that design process up to start construction.
Is it, is this normally something that we contract out when we're doing these design phases and projects that are this size? What is?
Yes. So at this, at this size, it is recommended that we utilize a C Mar early on the project, again, to minimize your risk for change orders and things of nature that maybe the design team and the project management team can't see early on. But C Mar, with their expertise and their tools and knowledge, they can help see those risks early on to make sure the design is good and clean, so that when we go into construction, we don't have some unforeseen conditions or things that we could have mitigated earlier on by having their expertise at the table.
Gotcha. And how did we find this particular company?
So we put on RFQ. We had four firms submit for that RFQ. And the team narrowed it down to two teams were selected and invited in to do an in-person interview. And then the selection committee selected Alfred Beatty Holt as the highest ranked and most qualified for this project.
Have we worked with them in the past, or have they worked on other maybe large-scale projects in North Carolina in this area?
They have. They're a very well-known company in this area. As far as the city of Durham, I'm not sure if I can speak to our experience. I may ask Gina to come up and speak to how much.
Good afternoon, Gina Probst, Deputy City Manager. Construction manager at risk is one of three types of delivery methods in North Carolina. You've got design, bid, build. You have design, build, and construction manager at risk. It's a kind of level set. That's a procurement process that we use. It is perfect and so appropriate for projects of this size. There's a lot of risk. Having a construction manager at risk in the pre-construction phase aids in the delivery method, the conflict avoidance, constructability, logistics. So it is, it's a great procurement and delivery method. This firm has worked on several projects with us in the past. Holt Brothers is part of this as a joint venture. They've not worked on some of our projects, but the other, the other team has. So they scored well. We had actually really good firms. And typically, we find that in C Mar processes. And this firm rang to, excuse me, rose to the top.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protam. Yeah, thank you so much. And appreciate the comments, the other questions from my colleagues. I just want to say, I'm excited. We passed the bond last fall. This is a big part of the parks bond that we passed. And so I'm glad we're moving forward. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Baker.
You have a very hard job. This is a very complex project. How do we balance the remediation, waiting on NCDQ, looking for state money with moving forward with the bond money that has, that is being used from the residents of Durham? How do we balance that? What are you concerned about? What are you hopeful for in how we move forward?
If I may, I'd like to ask my colleague Wade Walcutt to come up and help speak to that.
Hello, Wade Walcutt, Parks and Recreation. So the process we're looking at right now that is outlined in your agenda item is to take a look first at, I believe, at the Long Meadow Park area. So we don't have any issues right there related to the prer regulatory landfill program. So that allows us to start the design and thinking about the construction now and not have to wait while the state continues to do their analysis, all the sites, but including East End Park. We had mentioned before that we anticipate the final results being available to us by the end of this calendar year for additional data, which consists of above and below ground water and air vapor analysis that's going on right now. So that's why the team has laid it out in this phased approach, so that we can start doing the work now, planning the work, and then move forward. And by that time, we're hopeful that we'll have more data. And then at that point, staff will come, provide their recommendation on how to move forward, along with input from the community and their thoughts and opinions and recommendations as well.
Thank you so much. Are we confident in the timeline of the end of 2025? And I ask that because wasn't, wasn't there some testing that we were supposed to receive by this summer? And is that the same testing that we're hoping to receive by the end of the calendar year now, or is this additional testing?
I can't recall exactly which, which testing. I'll answer your first question. Confidence level, I can't control that part with the state. I think what you might be referring to is related to the above and below ground testing. They may have some samples in already with, again, I am not the expert. I just play one. I believe with this kind of analysis of above and below ground water and vapor, what they're trying to do is collect a longer period of samples, so that if they take a few samples, April, May, they don't want to release those and say, this is what we have. And I think it's helpful for them to say, April, May, June, July, August, September, and show that there may be fluctuations with the data throughout the year. And so I think that's why they're waiting for, for a December timeframe to give them a broader spectrum of analysis.
Thank you. This is, this is a tough, tough project, tough work. So I really appreciate the work that's going into it. I also appreciate the, wanted to just say, I appreciate the, all the background that was included in the staff report. So whoever wrote the staff report, great job. Really appreciate that. And good, good luck. And we'll be, we'll be here, available, you know, if you need stuff from us. Obviously, we want this to be a success. And a lot of people are watching this project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Freeman, the Councilmember Rist.
I would just like to add two things. Specifically, is there any conversation in this design process about how you do some storytelling about the history of this area?
Yes, that absolutely can be part of. We have a, one of the elements that we're adding is a storytelling terrace for the fire pit. That's one of the new park elements that we're actually adding to this site. So absolutely.
And then just around the mitigation, is there any update from the Parks and Rec around what the plan is and how that's going to move forward?
Sure. No more than what I was just sharing as far as receiving more data from the state by the end of this calendar year. When that is completed, that is the last scheduled testing and analysis the state has to do. And then at that point, we'll have comprehensive data and all the information that they will test for.
And that'll be all the parks, not just this?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Protam. Mr. Walcutt, can you also remind us, I know back going to the, to the bond sort of issue and the sort of like the public education there. I know there was communication with Parks and Rec about how things might move around, where pools might be, tennis courts, to address some of the lead that we know is there. So can you remind us again how, how the design of where things might be is being influenced by sort of what we know about lead so far?
I'll try. So that is another reason why we're looking at this phased approach and starting where we are. So as our teams and when these contracts are able to be finalized and move forward, we'll have a great design team. We'll have a great C Mar team. And we'll be able to start at that other end. What we are also contemplating and talking about with the state and, and everyone is depending on what solution that we collectively come up with, there may be some advantages at East End with the amenities that our residents said they want, that may also serve in a way to cap or provide a barrier between anything that could be deemed risky below the surface. So for example, we know it's clear that we need more courts spaces, whether that's tennis, basketball, pickleball, what have you. We know there's interest in the community for additional skate spots, dots, and parks. And so with all that kind of information, or I'm sorry, all those kinds of amenities that we've heard previously, those may also serve the purpose of providing that barrier between people and risk.
Thank you. I appreciate you also becoming, studying up on the lead piece. I know this wasn't your, what your, your, your background, but I appreciate you becoming the most, the foremost expert in Durham on lead, it sounds like.
Let's not, let's redact that from the.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Manager.
I just wanted to add on to and commend our staff in Parks and Recreation, specifically under Wade's leadership. You know, as they have, as they have worked to, you know, very closely with DEQ to restore these parks to the public use and good, I've been really impressed with their dedication and intentionality about not just restoring the parks, but really thinking about how this might present opportunities to really enhance and improve the parks. And I think, you know, obviously, restoring the parks is job one and one that they take very seriously, but, but appreciate the thoughtfulness around how we might reimagine some of these spaces to be better than they were when, when the lead was discovered and we started this work. And I think this project in particular is a space where that philosophy is playing out. So I just wanted to commend them publicly for it. And I'm really excited as, as those options come forward. And as we hear from the public, people are really anxious to get these parks back online. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, colleagues. Gentlemen, thank you. Good to see you. All right. I'll yield to Councilmember Rist, item number 13. I believe you pulled that.
Thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you for coming. I just had a question about number 13. So I, I know that 12 and 13 were both contracts with Eckerd under the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act. The contract I saw from, for the number 12 had nice performance metrics in there. For number 13, there were no performance metrics in that statement of work. And I just want to ask, I know I've asked a lot of questions about performance metrics. This is critical work, as you all know. And so I want to make sure that we are clear about what our contractors are doing and have a way to assess their performance. So I just want to ask, I don't know if that was an oversight, or just want to ask about that and make sure those performance metrics are included in the, in the final contract.
Russell, you're with Office of Economic and Workforce Development. I will ensure that that information is in there. They are measured through enrollment through Wagner Pizer. So when an individual actually comes into the career center, they are actually get an account and they're rolled through the NC Works, the NC Works Online system. Once they enroll in that system, we then try to get them to have a service. When we perform a service, then those services count as the performance for the actual career center. And it's a little different from the previous contract where it has the different metrics of the second quarter act, the fourth quarter act, the median earnings. So those are particular WIWA metrics. But with these particular metrics, it's more so the enrollment, the services that they are actually getting once they actually enter the career center, along with maybe, it may be resume building, it may be guidance and counseling, something of that nature. But it is based on those.
So just so I understand, so on the, on the first contract, number 12, that's sort of adults under the, we owe a funding from the feds. And so those metrics come from the, that's sort of federally mandated in terms of like jobs and wages, right?
Yes, sir.
And so is that why, so it's different under the, the contract for youth services? Is that, is that what you're saying?
So adult dislocated working youth, there are WIWA federally funded programs. With the career center, the career center is a program that we got the funding from, from the adult dislocated worker. So it wasn't technically funding from the federal government. With the state of North Carolina, they have, once they reauthorized the WIWA program, the Department of Commerce stated that they wanted to not operate the career centers throughout the state of North Carolina. So some of the career centers are operated by DWS and some of them are contracted out through different agencies. With the city of Durham, that's exact, or the Durham Workforce Development Board, it was contracted out once the state stated that they did not want to run the actual career center. So it wasn't, and that's, then we had to figure out a way to actually find the funding to actually have a actual manager for the career center to operate the different partners there. So that's, is different, but is, is WIWA funding, but the metrics and stuff are a little different.
For the, for the career center?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And again, so like, what's, what are the key metrics then in terms of like, as you think about performance for the career center? Is it mostly like numbers of people served? Is it sort of like, what's the, how do you, how do you, how do you all assess that?
And I will yield to Ms. Yolanda Chisholm. She is the actual manager that works with Eckerd, and she can give you a little bit more information on that.
Okay, that'd be great.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yolanda Chisholm with Eckerd Connect. So yes, we do manage the career center and all of the partners who come through to, who operate out of the career center and provide services to all of the job seekers within the city of Durham, as well as employers who operate out of the city of Durham. From last year, we had almost 1,600 distinct individuals who came through our doors to receive services. Examples of services is getting assistance with creating your resume, doing online job searches, applying for jobs, interviewing skills, some of those soft skills development that they need, that employers said that some of our job seekers are lacking. So those are examples of some of the services that we provide. In addition to that, when we're working with employers, we help them to post jobs online so job seekers can apply for those positions, as well as if they need any kind of assist, excuse me, assistance with labor market information. Oftentimes, you know, we have conversations with them if they're coming in and telling us that they need to hire someone and the wages are still $10 an hour. We kind of let them know, hey, there's a lot of competition out there. There's not sustainable wages for our citizens, especially in this area. So just giving them some realistic information that they can go back to the table to, to try to, you know, see if they can increase the wages so all of our residents can, can earn sustainable wages.
I appreciate that, Ms. Chisholm. That's really helpful. Yeah. So again, if you all could add, and we want to do some of those performance metrics into that scope of work, that'd be really helpful. Yeah. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else on this item? All right. Thank you both. Good to see you. Appreciate the work you do. We'll go turn now to our presentations, our first presentation, which is slated to 15 minutes from our Finance Department Fiscal Year 2024 through 2025 Fourth Quarter Financial Report. We do have a speaker on this item, but we'll receive a presentation first. We'll then entertain our speaker and then we'll turn to the council.
Good afternoon. Tim Flor, Finance Department. So before we get started, I would like to say this is a collaborative process between the Finance Department and the Budget Department. And so I'm so appreciative of the fact that I have my co-pilot here, Christina Riordan, Budget and Management Services Director, to help answer any questions that we might have. As well, I have my navigator, since I'm using the airplane theme, I guess, with me Julia Brenneman, who is my senior analyst, who did a lot of work on getting the presentation together. And so while we are calling up that presentation, I will also say, this is the Q4 report. So this is as of June 30th, 2025. I will also say these numbers and this information is unaudited. We are currently in the process of going through our audit. The audit is going well, but there still are invoices trickling in and invoices coming in and some revenue trickling in. So, and we still have lots of accruals to make, so that information will be provided. And we are looking forward to having our audit done by August, October 31. And everything is going well with that. So to get started, just as I said, the Q4 report is, it is online. So we would encourage you and the residents to go online and check out that financial report. What I'm providing to you today is just sort of a very general high-level overview of some of the financial numbers. But the financial report, the quarterly report, has a lot of other information in there. So we encourage you to, you and our residents to look at that information. Not only does it include the budget to actual information, but it also provides a debt and investment update. There's lots of information in there on some of our contracting, some of our claims, a CIP stoplight report, as well as some additional information that we're putting in there for General Services to meet sort of requirements, resolution requirements for Real Estate Division Report. And then also just a very brief update on the American Rescue Plan, where we're at on that. And so certainly encourage you to, to look at that information. So jumping right into the general fund, we have a little bit to talk about today. So our year-end expenditures are projected to be $14.8 million less than budget. So that's good. We always like to come in under budget. We always have to come in under budget by general statute requirement. So that is good. Year-end revenues projected, though, were $2.4 million less than budget. We're going to talk about that here in a few minutes with an overall budget variance of $12.4 million, which, and so that is, that is good, having that variance. But ultimately, that variance is not as big as the amount of money that we have used reserves to pay for that. So ultimately, right now, we are anticipating using $9.5 million worth of our fund balance reserves. And so we'll talk about that here in just a few minutes. But big overview, general overview of our projected expenditures. So you'll see 305, 304, almost 305 million dollars is what we spent in total expenditures or expecting to for the general fund. 77% of that is for personnel services. So the majority of our general fund budget does go to pay the salaries and benefits of the employees that are doing the work. 18% is for operating expenditures. And then just a small amount goes in for capital A, and then the others are transfers for other funds. For, and so this is just sort of a summary by department of the expenditures. And you'll see, what we like to see there on the, the far right-hand side is the fact that all the departments, with the exception of a very small over budget in departments. So we're right where we need to be. We were anticipating that small overage in the communications budget. So there's absolutely no concerns there. And as you're all aware, we do budget by the fund. So we can go over in a department. It's just we're looking at, by the way you adopted the budget is, is where we have to be compliant as far as being under budget. For year-end revenues, as I mentioned, they were less than budgeted, but we received about $295 million in total revenue. 52% of that was for property taxes, which is absolutely what we expect, 35% sales tax. So those are two big revenue streams. And then the 7% intergovernmental, that's the money that comes from the county, from the services that we provide for them. And then 4% charges for service. If we go to the next slide, you can see sort of a breakdown where, where we're at on that. No surprises, the sales tax number, again, we're projecting $2.8 million to be under budget. We'll talk a little bit about that here in just a second. But no surprises. But what we have here, this is the slide that I really kind of want to show and to illustrate where, where we're at. This reflects the, the last several years of our expenditures and our revenues. And so if you can see the last couple of years, or last year and this year, we are spending more than we are bringing in. And so when that happens, clearly, we have to, we have to tap in to our reserves, which have been strong. We have strong reserves and that is, you know, that is anticipated. That is how we work it. But you'll also notice that the three years prior to that, we, we had more revenues than expenses. And so that is where we were building up those reserves. And so we're almost to the point now where we have eaten up all the reserves that we've accumulated over the last few years. And as you all know, we have, we operate by ratios as to what kind of reserves we should keep. And so as every year, our, our expenditure budgets increase, that percentage number, while it stays the same, that means our reserves need to sort of increase proportionally to, to maintain the reserves we have. And so we're keeping a very close eye on where those, where that fund balance and those reserves are landing. And so this is just, I, I don't want to use this as, but this is, maybe it could be the canary in the coal mine, where we just need to be aware of moving forward that, you know, we, we have used those reserves. We are still in very good shape, but we just need to be, I think, careful as we move forward as to how we are looking at spending our money.
Tim, it feels suspend for just a moment. Just want to alert folk that are watching that we're having a couple of technical issues with our camera. Councilmember Cook, I hope you're getting your good side, because it's, because it's locked on you. So you're, you're getting a lot of airtime today.
I know, and I am like.
Okay.
Oh, it is. Okay, great.
It's a great shot, by the way, but.
Thank you. Yeah, I sound very knowledgeable, so I'm, you know, it's fine by me.
Go ahead, Tim. I'm sorry. Thank you.
And so for, for the revenues, I, I just pulled out, you know, sort of the, the big, the big numbers. So again, sales tax were, were $2.8 million under budget, and I've got a slide for that here in just a second. Utility franchise taxes, that $1.4 million. I, I think we've had that discussion before, that those, that revenue stream is slowly drying up. And so we're not surprised by those numbers. Good news, Palbeel, we were up $845,000 over budget. Property taxes are coming in strong. Our collection rates are, are strong. And so, so that is, that is always good. And our charges for services certainly have come in over budget as well. And so this is just a quick overview of our property taxes, sort of just collection by year. And you'll see, you know, the bottom there, the increase, the 4%, 5%. And, and there's a big increase last year. That is just indicative of the fact that there was a tax rate change. And so that is why you see significant increases in the property taxes. Going into sales taxes, so sales taxes are, have been interesting. And so if you've seen the prior year, we were $2,000, $2 million over budget. This year, we're, we're projecting to be $2.8 million, $2.9 million under budget. I will say part of that is, the, the numbers look wonky, but I will also say that there have been issues with the Department of Revenue and how we have been getting refunds towards the end of the fiscal year. And so last year, the, the nonprofit refunds, we got a negative refund. I suspect the way ultimately it played out, the last year, we probably would have hit right on budget, which would have then helped this year's budget, because the $2 million should have been accounted for this year. But it is a very wonky thing that has happened for the last couple of years. And the Department of Revenue, the Budget Department has very much been on top of all of this. It's just, we have no control of that. There, there really is not a whole lot of transparency into the Department of Revenues and some of their things. But, but know that we are, we are on it. And, and so with that final month, we still have one more month of sales tax to come in. And so why I'm also sort of careful as to what, what our final financial position is, is the fact that we're just not quite sure what that final month is going to look like. Because if we were to go to trends, we would think it would be one thing, and the information that we have on refunds, but it just doesn't seem to play out that way because of things that are going on at the Department of Revenue. So, so I just want to be aware of that, that it, it, it's not really, from my standpoint, it's not really a budgeting issue. It really is a remittance issue with the Department of Revenue. So pivoting on to our enterprise funds, water and sewer funds, so total operating revenues came in above budget.
Mr. Flor, do you want us to hold questions till the very end, or do you, or?
I'm open if, if you have a question. I'm more than happy to.
Want me to hold? Yeah, it's up to you. Yeah.
Okay. So for water and sewer, our total operating revenues came in above budget by $256,000. But operating, operating, operating revenues falling short by $559,000. So a net revenue shortage of $303,000. Again, I, I, I call this sort of precision budgeting. There's never usually very many issues that we have with our, our water fund. Want to go to the next slide? And so what, what I will point out from the revenue standpoint is, if you look at the non-operating revenues, there was a million dollars of inspection line loan. And so that was a forgivable loan that we have gone after. We have just started doing the work on getting, using those loan proceeds to expense. So, so it's not that, we just haven't got the loan this year. We, we fully expect to get that, that money next year. And so not that we're not going to get it. And then the other is an investment income. Sometimes the market plays tricks on us. And so what we were projecting it to be, it came under what we anticipated. So we were short there. But from the expenditure standpoint, we're slightly under budget. So, so there is a negative overall budget variance. But again, no surprises there. It's a strong fund, lots of reserves and fund balance, and so no issues or concerns there. The transit fund, so expenditures are projected under budget by $635,000 due to various savings and operating expenditures. Overall, the fund's only negative budget variance of $2.6 million. More than happy to address any questions there. Total revenues fell short of budget by $3.2 million, with only tax revenue exceeding its budget by $124,000. And so understand that as well, that this fund is supported by 3.75 cents of the tax rate, which is $16.1 million. If we want to go to those numbers, that sort of gives you an overview. And again, the intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenue, that's where, really where we're, we're sort of short. And that's just, I think, because of expansion of services that we would normally receive reimbursement from the county on. And since those services didn't happen, we, we didn't get those revenues. And here's the expenditures. Operating expenditures are sort of, you know, the, the big, the big line item there, $33.3 million, or $33 million is where we're at. And so we're just shy under budget there. So solid waste fund revenues, total revenues are $33.1 million, which is $2.2 million below the adjusted budget of $35.3 million. The shortfall is mainly due to the operating revenues coming in at $8.4 million, which is 78.2% of the budget. Expenditures, actuals were 454, 481 over budget, driven mainly by higher personnel cost. If you want to look at there, this is, this is the, the, the revenue numbers. You'll see they're illustrated there. Yeah, we're, yeah, there we go. Thank you. So you can oversee the overall budget variances, budget variance, which was a negative 2.6 there. And so again, a lot of the revenue funds were sort of, I, I will say, Q4 was not as, as good as we would have liked to have seen it. And so, but again, there's not any, not any major concerns, but it could be indicative of circumstances forthcoming. So there, there is just an awareness that, that we, we probably need to keep. Stormwater fund, so this one is doing, adding is doing well. The storm water fund is self-sufficient fund and receives no tax support. So I always like to point that out. Total revenues are projected to be $32.1 million or $3.9 million over budget. So that, those revenues are coming in strong. Expenditures are expected to be under budget by 1.2 million for an overall budget variance of $5.1 million. And so even though, even though with the large, you can go on, the budget variance, a lot of that negative net revenue, the $455,000, a lot of that is because we use reserves in that fund to pay for capital projects. And so that is absolutely what we expect to do. Parking fund, year-end, the parking fund received 99% of budget revenues, ending the year with a total revenue of $7.6 million. Conversely, the fund is projected to spend only 94% of budgeted expenditures, ending the year with expenditures of $8.5 million. So revenues continue to be insufficient to cover the expenses, with the debt service fund subsidizing the existing debt portion of the fund. I think we've had this conversation a number of times before, and we're, it's still sort of the same situation. And we're in there. Again, no surprises where we have, where we anticipate landing. Ultimately, what, ultimately what ends up happening is we are in a situation where we have a negative fund balance for them. And, and we just treat it as it, as it's an enterprise fund, we just treat it as a, sort of a loan from another enterprise fund. And so there's certainly lots of funds there as, as we try to figure out how to move forward with parking. Enterprise funds, the ballpark fund, DPAC, I think both, if we can just go to the next slide, they're both, go back up to that one, sorry. Positive net revenue, the ballpark fund, $54,000. DPAC fund, the overall budget variance is projected at $710,000, with net revenues being $2.3 million. Continues to be, DPAC, a very successful fund for us. And so we're very in solid shape with both of those funds. And then finally, just a very, very high-level overview of the ARPA projects. This is the report. So we're required to report on a quarterly basis to the U.S. Treasury, and then submit an annual report to the U.S. Treasury. And so the numbers where we're at, total obligated funds, as you all are aware, $51.8 million is what we were obligated. We have expended $25.5 million of those funds. And we certainly currently have 25 projects in process and have completed five of those projects. And so with that, if there are any questions, more than happy to entertain those.
Thank you, Director. We actually have a resident who's going to, wants to speak on this item. Then I'll give colleagues an opportunity to exhaust all of their questions and comments. So at this time, I want to thank you. I, I want to welcome Dale, you stick around. You're not, I want to welcome Dale McKeel. Are they virtual or in? Oh, it's okay. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I like the shot clock. That's a nice touch. Wait for my presentation to come up. Okay, so I want to comment on the CIP stoplight report, which is part of the finance presentation. Next slide. Go back one more. There we go. One more. Okay. I want to focus on one project that's in the.
Restart the clock, please. I'm going to give you a full three.
Great. So I want to focus on one project, the Third Fork Creek Trail, which, Phase Two, which goes from Southern Bounders Park up to, up to the American Tobacco Trail. Next, next. So this slide, this project has had continually sliding completion dates. When the City Council awarded the design contract in March of 2019, the expected completion date was winter of 2022. These other dates are taken from the city website. And currently, the expected completion date is winter of 2027. So you can see that that project has slid five years from what was originally anticipated. Next slide. The project appears to be stuck at 65% design for almost three years. This, again, is based on these reports from the, from the quarterly financial updates. Next slide. But yet, when you look at the stoplight report, it says that the project is green, which I assume means it's kind of on track. So the, the stoplight report doesn't appear to be a whole lot of providing a whole lot of meaningful data. Doesn't provide a, a means for accountability when these projects are, are kind of getting stuck in the process. And this is not an isolated example. The, the R. Kelly Bryant Bridge Trail has also been sort of stuck at 65% design for three years. And the Durham Rail Trail, the Downtown Rail Trail completion date has also slipped. When that project went out to design in February 2021, we said it was going to be completed in fall of 2024. Well, now that has slid to spring of 2027. And I would say most of our trail bicycle and sidewalk projects are chronically delayed. Next slide. It doesn't have to be this way. The Acusta Trail, which is a rail trail up in the mountains, the first six miles of that trail opened in July. The design firm for that project was selected in November of 2021. So that was like eight months after the Downtown Rail Trail. They've completed design and construction and cut the ribbons. And, and that project was actually delayed about six months due to Helene. Next slide. So my request to you is just, A, improve the CIP stoplight report. And I understand that there are some changes to that that are already in progress. So kudos to that. But also, I would ask you to focus on the chronic delays of our trail bicycle and sidewalk projects in Durham. As many of you probably know, Bike Durham did a report last year, which has 10 recommendations. Would ask you to look, look at those. And we just say, we've got millions of dollars invested in these projects. And project costs, construction costs are continuing to increase. So, you know, every time, all the delays, we're just digging ourselves into a deeper hole. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, sir. Let me acknowledge the arrival of the mayor and say good afternoon to him. I'm Adam Clark. If you'll let the record reflect that. Also, colleagues, there is staff working on this project present, in case any, if that presentation prompted any queries from colleagues, from council members, there is staff here to address that if you want to pursue that. But at this time, I'll yield to colleagues for questions, comments for, for Director Flor on the quarterly report, finance report, and any questions you may have from our, our residents, questions prompted by our residents' presentation as well, so.
I have one question to start, Mr. Flor. Thank you so much for the presentation, as always. So I'm just trying to understand the story with the general fund. So, so we, we budgeted, we budgeted for the, the budget, we proposed about 297 in revenues for the general fund, right? And expenditures are 306 million. So we were expecting some variance from the budget, right? And we were planning to use some general fund to cover that. And so from your presentation, we're just have to, we're having to dig a little bit more into the general fund to cover a little bit more, since we had a shortfall, particularly on the revenue side.
Yeah. So historically, when we, we develop budgets, we balance the budget with reserves, right? And so, and then usually through the course of the year, there are savings in areas where those savings then account for the appropriated fund balance that we use to balance the budget. It's just, in the last few years, we've been using more of that appropriated fund balance than, than we had anticipated.
And so it looks like your projection through the year is we'll have to use a little bit more of the fund balance than we had planned in the budget, correct? About a million something more?
Correct. Yes, yes.
Okay. That's my, that's my question for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabir.
Well, actually, I think, I make sure I'm, I'm clear. I, I think what I'm saying is we're using, yes. So, so from, we can get the presentation up again, so I can probably show it. Because there is, there is, there is the adopted budget, which, which we used to balance, right?
I think it's slide eight, right?
Yeah. And then there is the, there's the carryforwards and the carryovers, which then we're moving over the encumbrances and then all the carryover requests. And so if, if we want to look at, go down the next, you know, go, go up to, one more. There we go. No, I'm sorry. Go back down. Right there, I think is what I went, is it there? Okay, so the, right. So if you look at the net, the net revenue less expenditures, that very bottom line under, you see the, the adopted. And so when we balance the budget.
It was $8.4 million.
It was $8.4 million. And then when we do the carryforward, so that negative is, is, is really represents the, the reserves that we've budgeted.
We're drawing on, right?
Right. And so then when we do the adjusted, so the adjusted budget, that's the carryover request and the carryforward request. So the encumbrances from the prior year that we move, and then the additional projects. And so ultimately, then that, that means we are, we are budgeting then $21 million of reserves to cover then those, those adjusted by, adjusted budget items. And so what we're totally looking at there is $9.4 million. So it's not $1 million. It really is, it's one, it'd be $1 million over what the adopted budget was.
That's what, that's my point, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cabir.
Thank you. Could we get a slide on the fund balance? And because we have, to your point, we have policies, what is it, 16.7%? And so what, what we are over that, that would be really helpful.
Yes. And so, so Director Riordan and I had that discussion, and we, we purposely did not put it in there because I really don't have final numbers yet at this point. And so it, you will see that slide, I think, during the, the carryover presentation, which is, which will be in a couple of weeks.
That's what I was also going to ask, is what, when we were going to see carryover and carryforward. That's, so one question, I'd love to see the fund balance slide when you all get it. Two, I was going to ask about carryforward and carryover. And then, I, I mean, to your point, I think everybody's been watching the economy carefully this year, trying to figure out what's happening. I think, to your point, it is a canary in a coal mine. I think things are going to slow down, finance, like a lot. And I, I think while y'all, both finance and budget staff in this city are excellent. We have a long history of excellent work. We have been awarded things for it. So I have deep trust in, in y'all's expertise. And I think you're seeing the same thing. And so we have to get ahead as best we can, and I think you're prepared for that, which is why we're starting to have conversations earlier than we usually do. We're going to have to dig deep into what is actually happening in our budget. What is in there that is old, that is not, which is why I know why we're doing a strategic plan refresh, right? We got to dig in there, figure out what's old, what has to go, where we can get more efficient. We need to have conversations with the county where there's duplication. And how, because otherwise, like, there's also expectations around employee pay. And we, you already highlighted that last year when we were adopting the budget. So none of this is, you telegraphed what's happening. We're in for a real tight budget cycle next year. And I don't think our revenue is going to get better, because what's happening nationally is not going to get better. So I want to just go ahead and telegraph very publicly that we're going to have to do a lot of due diligence in. that we're going to have to do a lot of due diligence in, in getting rid of either initiatives, programs, whatever it is, that, you know, they're from 10 years ago. They were put in the base budget. And are they really necessary anymore? Do they align with our strategic plan to get us to where we need to be next year? We all are very aware that we, I think the county did three tax increases in a row. We did two in a row. We have to be real thoughtful about what we're asking residents to pay if our economic, like the macroeconomic circumstances. Duke is cutting. We've had mass, you know, USAID, you know, pretty much got completely defunded. And we know there's a lot of folks who live in Durham who had jobs that don't anymore. And so those headwinds, we have to get as close to, you know, we have to be very thoughtful, intentional, and understand what's happening broadly and those effects on our residents. I don't think sales tax is going to get better. I think it's going to continue to decrease as people tighten belts, because people are very unsure of what's coming. And we rely on that revenue. And so I think y'all are very aware of it. And I just want to go ahead and flag it and say that I expect this council to, to be ready to dig deep and, and spend some real time with staff on our budget next year. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Baker?
Mr. Flora, you talked a little bit about the wonkiness of the sales tax. Can you just give us a little bit more on that, nonprofit reimbursements, a little bit more on that process?
And so I may defer to my colleague who really manages that.
Christina Reardon, Budget and Management Services. So the way that nonprofits work is that they will pay sales tax and then submit a refund to the Department of Revenue. And so the sales tax initially comes in and then it gets deducted. And so when that kind of happens sometimes is a little wonky, as Director Flora, you know, kind of mentioned. And so it's one of the reasons too, that when we are making projections, especially at the end of the year, because sometimes they come in every six months. And so the end of the year tends to be a time where we're, there may be some volatility. So another reason we wanted to wait to give you a fund balance number. And, and it does affect kind of how we project sales tax, those refunds.
Thank you. And wonkiness, timing is inconsistent?
Timing, and we have seen a couple of negative refunds, which are unusual, but some, some things where they've taken them in and taken them out. And so that's something as well, too, that has happened. And we have been in contact with them and we are very careful on watching those. We do keep very close ties on what is happening in the community as far as nonprofits and try and get a sense of what to try and predict. But also, we don't have control over when those might come in and kind of how they come in as well, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
And I will say, you know, traditionally, it's very, it's easy, it's predictable, right? So just like Duke University or even us, we go after our sales refund. We time it. And so, so we expect every year to see this. And I think what we had seen in previous years is that they were giving more refunds than we were anticipating, because it's like we know who the big players are and when they hit. And so when we see those negative refunds, that is when you're like, well, what, what just happened? And so, which is why I, I will pin this on the Department of Revenue.
And that's just one giant chunk for all of the different tax exempt entities in Durham?
Right, so they go after, so, so they decide when they want to go after it. And so it's usually on a, a pretty routine schedule. But if they get off their routine and they do something, but which is what is weird, because it's like, oh, well, we see, it looks like, based upon historical information, we've already gotten all of these. And so we should be in the clear. And so then when they start going back and forth and then giving us a negative refund, it, it just, it wreaks havoc and with the, the books. And even when we reach out, it's, it's, it's a black box over there sometimes. They're not as, I think, they'll tell you it's by general statute, but it's hard to sort of drill into a lot of that information that they're providing.
Do we have a ballpark? I mean, I know I'm putting you on the spot. Do we have a ballpark of kind of what that amount is of the reimbursement amount?
For overall that we see? We can get you that information.
Okay. Yeah, I know that was.
I don't want to just throw it out there.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cook, did you have any questions?
Thank you, and thank you, Julia. Great presentation. I just, I was wondering a little bit about kind of the separating out of operating expenditures from personnel services. Do we ever see any overlap there? Or I guess, I'm just thinking about like, I don't know if this comes into this, into play, but like workers' comp and things like that, where like they might not be specific to salary or wages or, or care, but might end up being in operating costs. Do those ever, do we ever see overlaps in there?
I, I, hang on just a second. So workers' comp, I think most of that is budgeted in our risk fund.
Our risk fund, okay.
Yeah. So which then ultimately will get charged back as a sort of indirect cost, but.
Okay. Okay, but otherwise, pretty separate. Okay. And then I, I had that question, but that one was answered. I'm going to pass, but I do have some questions that are like not as related. So I want to let my colleagues have an opportunity to ask about this data and then I'll come, and come back to me.
Absolutely. We'll give you an opportunity to exhaust all the questions you have. Councilmember Riss and then Councilmember Freeman.
Thanks, Mayor Potem. Mr. Flora, well, this issue of sales taxes. So I seem to recall during the budget process that we like scaled back our estimates for sales tax, because it had been coming in slower than we thought. So as I recall, we scaled back. But yeah, we're still, looks like we're showing that current year, we're expecting 2.8 less than we even like expected, right?
Right, and again, what I, what I'm, what I fully think happened in this situation is, is what we're projecting is 2.8 million dollars. Really should be more like 800,000 dollars off budget, because the 2 million dollars that you see that we were over budget last year, I think goes back to the wonkiness of the Department of Revenue in a, like, in the, it would be like this month of last year, we thought it was to be accrued back to the prior year. And so when in reality, it probably should have been on our books this year. And so which would, which would then make it like we hit the budget. Because I think last year in our discussions, we really did expect that we were going to hit budget. We scaled back on, on the amount of increase of budget that we used for the, in, in developing the budget. But sales tax is going up. It's just how much of a percent it's actually going up. And so, so really, ultimately, what I'm saying is, I feel like sales tax is about where we had budgeted it. It's just, it's a booking, it's a booking issue from last year to this year because of the information we got from the Department of Revenue.
But across the two years, we're still about, about 800,000 short below, yeah, so a little bit short.
But 800,000 on the amount that we're receiving.
Right, no, it's, yeah, yeah, it's, it's a smaller amount. I guess I'm also wondering, like, what, like, what are the models you run to project sales tax revenues? Is that something the state provides to us or do we run models? Like, what are, how do we get that data?
I mean, we use historical information, but I think we just, it's a standard. And I'll, I'll let Director Reardon sort of discuss how they project that.
Yeah, Christina Reardon. We do have models that we're using basing a lot of historical data. And then we're looking also at trends. So we're looking sometimes at the sales tax data, not just on what we're collecting, because we do have refunds in there that can be very volatile, but also looking at gross collections as well, too, and seeing kind of what is happening on that end as well. And then kind of what are the trends in the economy and stuff and some of our, you know, experts in the field and stuff like that in the area and.
So it's not just historic trends, it's also looking at like, things like inflation rates, right? Sort of consumer confidence even, I think is also a big factor.
We have our league municipalities. They do a revenue report. We sometimes use that for some information as well, too, to just see what's going on, so.
So it's not one big model, you're right. It's sort of like you're using some historical data, using sort of inputs from other.
It's, it's a little bit art and science, yes, yeah. Because it is, it is a harder revenue source to predict.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I just wanted to track back to the transportation and transit. And you mentioned that the county services were not occurring. I just want to figure out exactly which services those are.
We have Director Egan here to help us with that. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and Members of Council, Sean Egan, Director of Transportation. So what you see with the county funded services for transit was that we had a major expansion of East Durham services on the Route 3 and the new Route 13 that was planned in the second half of fiscal year 25. Due to some of the issues that we were having with aging equipment and not having enough buses available for service, we were unable to implement those services in the second half of fiscal year 25. So we've been working on two fronts. One is to purchase additional budget buses. So the council approved that in February, so those buses will be arriving in the next few months. In addition to that, we are also stepping up and improving our maintenance programs so that more of our buses are available for service. So the expansions that were planned in the second half of fiscal year 25, a portion of that was implemented on August 23rd with evening and Sunday additional service frequency. But the bulk of that is scheduled to be implemented in November. So since we didn't run, we budgeted the revenue from the Durham County Transit Plan for those services. We were unable, because of the vehicles, to provide those services. So we didn't receive that revenue. But we are now on track to be able to implement those services in November.
And I just want to know how that's going to impact, I guess, for the fund, what that looks like. Is that going to hit? Well, because it's going to be delayed, it's going to hit in '26, as opposed to even being a part of like the, I don't know what quarter is it from September to December? Is that considered first, first quarter? So it'll hit for first quarter for next, next budget cycle, is what you're saying?
So we have worked with our partners at Durham County, Ingo Triangle, and the Triangle West TPO to line up full funding for those service improvements in the '26 budget. So when we start delivering those services in November, they'll be 100% reimbursable from the Durham County Transit.
I just want to make sure those funds will be available upfront, not like it'll be taken back and then have to be reallocated.
Yeah, thankfully, they're in the approved budgets for the transit plan for FY '26.
Councilmember Cabir, you have some additional questions?
Thank you. With the carryforward and the carryover items, are we going to do an analysis if that's the best use of funds? If we need to, if we're worried about fund balance? Because usually those are items, like basically, a department thought they were going to spend X, they didn't spend it. Then they want to use that money for these items, right? That's essentially what that decision is. And we get a list and we usually adopt that list. Are we going to have a conversation about, is that the best strategy based on what we're seeing with, with, with this presentation when it does come to council?
Christina Reardon. And so that will be coming in the next work session. And so you will be getting a chance to, we'll bring it forward as an agenda item. We have had a kind of modified carryover process this year in light of some of the, you know, things that you've been talking about as well, too. So we did, we did ask for departments to be really.
Like a leader list?
To be, to be very conservative this year. And so you will see that that, that list is lighter than it has been in years past. The carryforward is not something that we control. That is something that just happens because there are encumbrances that sit on the books and roll into the new year.
There are things that we've already said, the contract or whatnot, right?
Exactly.
But the carryover are things.
The carryover are things that we have control over.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Cook, did you want to revisit?
Yeah, this is probably going to be a question for you, Tim. I was wondering, I, I'm just, and this is my mistake, because I have been now looking through the whole report as opposed to the slides that you put in front of us. And so I'm too deep in the weeds. But I was wondering if you could just speak briefly about our investment report and how that sort of plays in with the information that you've given us.
So the investment report, so you will notice that there is no investment income that is in the general fund, because all the investment income is, is usually in a capital project fund. And so, so most of those investments are, any interest we make on those investments are, are usually in, in capital funds. So all of those investment earning, or enterprise funds, the respective enterprise funds. And so if it's, if, if there's a fund balance in an enterprise fund, we proportionally allocate those investment income revenues to that fund. Otherwise, the investment off of the general fund, fund balance goes into the CIP debt fund.
Oh, okay. Yes, that answers my question.
And so that just offsets.
I see. Okay.
Construction projects.
Okay, that's helpful. It doesn't appear, is it broken down by funds in my?
Not in, probably what you're seeing in the, the, in the investment report, no. It's just, because it's all, we do it all as one big amount. And then we just push it out and allocate it to the departments or the respective funds. Just based upon the percentage of the, the amount of investments earnings.
That makes sense, thank you.
Yeah.
And then this is an unrelated question, but there have been some folks that have been asking about the purchasing of the bonds and whether that information is available. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, so when we go to the market, so when we, when we go to the market, usually it's, it's like a, it's a, I don't want to say, it's like a private sale, right? So we have, we have brokers or firms that, that will, will, in one market, that buy these funds. And then for individuals, they're usually buying on the secondary market, right? So they go through, they go through a brokerage account. So, you know, if you have a brokerage account and you want to buy the, a Durham bond, it is through one of the other pass-throughs that it bought the bonds originally. And so it's usually, individuals usually buy on the secondary market. So in the, in the, the primary market, when we first go out there, it's usually, you know, insurance funds, mutual funds, other investment services firms that, that invest in our, in our, our bonds initially. And then they, then some of them use them just for their own portfolios. And then others will put them on the secondary market and sell the bonds on the secondary market.
Right, so I can appreciate that in the secondary market, sales are, we're totally disconnected from. But we are, is there access to the, to that primary sale data?
There is, but it usually is, it's, it's usually the bigger, they're buying big chunks. So it's not like we're selling individual, smaller amounts. There's like a bidding war that sort of goes on for, for those. And usually, I think, in past experience, you don't see many individuals that do that. And, and so I did print off, because I was sort of anticipating this question. And so I did, I did print off from the, the last big issuance we did for the, the bond referendum, who were the, the agencies or who, who were the companies that were, were buying these? Interestingly enough, the majority of those were insurance companies. So Travelers was like the number one big purchaser, State Farm, Safety National, Indiana Farm Bureau Auto. And so they're buying them for their portfolios because they're mitigating risk. Right, and so it's, it's almost like guaranteed income for them. And so there's stability and predictability there. But then there were some other firms that, that I think are called authorized participants. And so they're buying, and then they're, they're the ones who are actually putting it out there into the, the exchange for, for others to invest in. And so that, so that would be my, you know, if someone wants to buy some of our, our bonds, to me, that is the route to go, is to do it through your individual brokerage firm and buy it on the secondary market.
That's helpful. Thank you for looking into that. And then my next question is, I actually am curious about Mr. McKeel's questions about the stoplight report and its accuracy. So I don't know if you want to pass that off. You look like you maybe don't.
If I, if I might appeal to you, I, if, because I'm curious about that as well. I was going to let them kind of cap it off for us since the staff is here. But if the questions still remain to the financial part, I know Councilmember Riss, Councilmember Freeman, then we'll bring up staff.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
If that's okay?
Yep.
Therefore, thank you so much. Councilmember Riss, then Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. So I'm trying to still see the big picture here, so especially with a lot of the fund balance. So I don't think, so I, so we're, we have a negative fund balance of like 9.4 million for the general fund. And then for several, I mean, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll have to draw it out, essentially.
Right, yes.
And so in several of the enterprise funds, we also have a negative variance, meaning we'd have to draw down on the, on the, on fund balance.
Correct.
So do we have anywhere in this presentation, like what the expected total draw would be on the fund balance? Because we have, again, it's sort of individual enterprise funds, but like, is there, and this may go back to Councilmember Cabir's question about sort of where the fund balance is, so having sort of a sense of like, what is the fund balance? And then what's the expected draw on that from, from both the general fund and all these separate enterprise funds? To give us a sense of like, what's a total impact?
And so normally, we don't do one big cumulative fund balance. It's, we treat the general fund separate from sort of all the other enterprise funds. And, and so I will say, in the enterprise funds, you know, there is a, a significant fund balance in water and sewer. And I think as you go, I think the one where we're running a, sort of a negative fund balance right now is just the parking operation. We're in solid waste, we're, we're about there. But, but you know, that, but those, we're running those like businesses. And so we treat those separately. And so we're, so like for the parking fund, it really is just being offset, for the most part, as a loan, treated as a loan by, from water management. So for the general fund, we have significant fund balance. And so I don't want to give you any impression that, that we are, that there's not a lot of fund balance there. I mean, I think when we, I think when we're, I think we're projecting somewhere, we're in the ballpark of somewhere around $60 million that we are going to have in, in the general fund balance. And we know those ratios and we're, that we, we should be maintaining. You know, there's the, the 12% minimum and the 16.7% target. And then, and then we look at that information. We are just sort of apprehensive about putting those numbers out right now while we're, while there are still preliminary information out there. And I really do feel like that by the time we get to the carryover in the next couple of weeks, that we will have a better understanding of that information.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And don't want to suggest in any way, any kind of concern. It's more, I think it is more the sense of like the visibility. Just want to sort of see those numbers when they're ready, just so we can have a good understanding of that.
And absolutely happy to collaborate with my colleague here on how we can sort of get that information to you and so you can see it.
Great, much appreciated.
A comprehensive.
Sure.
Councilmember Freeman?
I was going to just say that Councilmember Cook asked my main question. But, and then just touching back on the green light, what's up?
All right, thank, thank you, colleagues. Let's staff who's here that's working on the Third Fork, if they want to come up and speak to the, our resident inquiry about the stoplight. And if you want to demystify anything about the CIP process and the timeline of delivering the projects.
Good afternoon, Mike Boyd, General Services Project Management Group. Third Fork Creek, I acquired that project spring of last year. And we are currently, we've gone through our internal reviews with the client departments. It's with DOT right now for their review. We, we've received comments back, submitted back to them, they're working on that. And it's also in Tier Four Site Plan Review as well, right now. Same thing with R. Kelly Bryant. R. Kelly Bryant, we're scheduling, we're targeting the fall of '27 for bid, winter of '27 to begin construction. Anything beyond that? Henry Prospery, our division manager can speak to that.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Henry Prospery, General Services. So the trails have absolutely been experiencing a lot of delays for a number of reasons. Third Fork Creek was the example in the presentation, so I can speak to that as an example. The longest scheduled delays on that project were due to two supplemental design agreements that were due to revised trail alignments. The total schedule lag from that two supplemental agreements was about two and a half years. So the first supplemental agreement came about through public engagement. The project was well into design when the engagement blueprint was adopted by city council. So staff went out to engage the public. As a result of that public engagement, there was a recommendation to move the trail alignment that was going through a residential neighborhood to be diverted through a wooded corridor. So that was a pretty big delay. It was a pretty big design ramifications as well as cost ramifications. So then the project progressed into design. It proceeded to about 65% design. This is about 2022, and the plans were actually submitted to NC DOT for their approvals. During that submittal, there was some request also that the trail be picked up out of some of the environmentally sensitive areas. They asked that the alignment and the profile of the trail be brought out of the 100-year floodplain. So that was also a significant delay. So again, the aggregate of those two supplemental agreements caused the project about two and a half years. So I think that accounts for the big gap between 2022 to 2024, which was probably noted as some of the, the information that Dale had presented.
Why would the designation remain green during all of that time? And when, when, when does it turn yellow or red?
I think that that's an error. I think that the stoplight report, obviously, the project is way behind and delayed. So I can't speak to the accuracy of that. But I would think from my perspective that that project would be in the red.
Who's in charge of the stoplight?
All the project managers input that information on a quarterly basis.
All right, thank you, very helpful. Colleagues, you have any questions or?
I would say our budget management staff can also speak to plans to update that process, which has been underway. Are you guys comfortable just giving a status update on, on what's going to be replaced in the stoplight report?
Good afternoon, J.J. Scott, Assistant Director with Budget and Management Services. What you are seeing, the current version of the stoplight report is the last gasp of a technically obsolete system that we use to collect and distribute this information. We spent about a year trying to fix it, but with the upcoming change to our new ERP, financial records system, the decision was made in the springtime to let that go and begin transitioning to a new process for both gathering information. So we will gather more and better information and also, at the very least, an administratively easier task to collate this and get this out in a meaningful manner. And so I did meet with Mr. McKeel and a few other folks earlier in the spring. And so we were able to hear some of these concerns. We shared many of those concerns. And so we have a new report that will be rolling out for Q1 of the current fiscal year. Many of the concerns that you heard here today will be addressed. We won't have an option anymore for continually changing project delivery dates. There will be a original delivery date along with, you know, the actual now expected delivery date. Much clearer direction on what the red, yellow, green means. And so, you know, working with our, our project managers to be able to clarify so that someone looking at the report does have a good sense of where we stand with each of these reports. So for about a year, we will be in this interim reporting phase until we get fully stood up in this new system, at which point then we can start looking at other opportunities to communicate more clearly with y'all, with the public about where we stand on these major projects. Specific questions?
Appreciate that. The manager actually wants to interject something, and I'll turn to you, colleagues.
I wanted to commend the budget staff for their work on the report. I also want to say that this coincides with, I think, an organization-wide effort to do a more regular cadence of project updates and management, project updates and reviews by senior management. Give a lot of credit to DCM Propes, who began this work under DCM Wimbush, whereby now, on a quarterly basis, senior leaders from across the city are meeting with general services staff to review the status of each project, to identify barriers and to try and find creative solutions to move those along. One of the things that the staff have reported out on the trail today, didn't, didn't talk much about, but I would highlight is, is we have experienced significant delays in project reviews by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I don't in any way want to pass the buck, but I do want to acknowledge that especially for our trails projects, that can be a significant delay. And especially coming out of COVID, we saw NC DOT suffer major staff turnover and major vacancies in project management roles whereby we would go months without getting updates. I think that is something that I'm very interested in. The DCMs are very interested in trying to elevate our tools for working with our partners who have to permit these projects in order to avoid these delays. And that's something that we are working on now. But I think going forward, I feel confident saying that I think there'll be more public transparency and more transparency to council about the status of projects and specifics around where delays are being encountered and what's driving that. Thank you, Mayor, for Tim.
Thank you. We'll go around the horn. Councilmember Riss?
Thank you, Mayor, for Tim. Appreciate the additional comments from the city manager and the comments from Mr. Scott. So like this is one of the areas we, we end up hearing a lot, right? And when we talk to residents, what we hear a lot is like, what's going on with these major projects? The rail trail, South Lively Creek Restoration Project and others. So this is one that residents have a lot of concern about. And so, and I think everyone is dies, and I think all residents understand that things happen, right? There's delays from DOT, there may be environmental things that happen. I think what people are partly asking for is like, when we have the delays that may happen, like what are we doing on our end to maybe speed things up in other ways? And so we say like, hey, there's a delay for some reason, but we're going to do this to kind of get it back on track. So that's what I think people are looking for. And I want to, to manage and the mayor, I think we need to do a better job of figuring out ways. Are there internal things happening that we can say, for this internal process, we can speed that up to get us back on track? Because I think people, all they see is like delays, they don't see, hey, in this project, we're actually speeding it up a little bit. So I think we need to be creative on our end to figure out ways, when the inevitable stuff happens, that we can get stuff back on track in ways that we show our own sort of creativity and like innovative spirit here in the city. So I think that's something that I think our residents would really appreciate because all they hear is like, delay, delay, delay. And I think as Mr. McKeel showed, like when the, it's not just about transparency. When the website says on one day, be delivered this date, we just change the dates? That doesn't really like, we need to have much more visibility on the council. If that's, if we're pushing something back, we need to know and know why so we can communicate that to residents. Because I think there's a lot of concern about our ability to deliver on these big projects. And I think, again, Mr. McKeel mentioned, a lot of them are sidewalks and paths and stuff, so we got to get better.
Thank you, Councilman.
Cool. Thank you, and good to see everyone. So what I'd like to contribute to this, and I appreciate the information, but I'm more interested in what, sort of along the same lines, what we can do to expedite the process or make sure we stay on, on target of the timeline. I want to make sure that I publicly state that I will utilize my political capital and my position of influence up the hierarchy. You know, if we're getting a delay at DOT, then I want to know because I can call board members. I can call the Secretary of DOT, I can call the governor's office, and they're going to answer the phone. And just like we're looking at what internal efficiencies we need to aspire toward, they can do the same thing. I just cannot take DOT has issues and we don't know what those issues are. I want to be a part of helping to pressure them to seek better outcomes. I, I, I'm just going to be a nuisance on this. The private sector has delays, but it does not function the same. And I know that we're not the private sector, but if things are getting done there, then we should aspire to do the same, have the same type of outcome. So I understand, you know, government has its bureaucracies. I understand all of those things. I'm just not going to accept it. So we need to find out what we need to do. If that means, you know, some relationship, you know, just some relationship massaging, then we'll have to do that. But I don't want to find out a year later at a report, at a work session, that, well, DOT had an issue. So we're going to do some internal pressuring here. We run into a situation in another agency. I want to know about it and not later, I want to know about it then. And let me get on the call and, and utilize my influence, right, as mayor, right?
Thank you. I appreciate everything that's been shared and agree with my colleagues. At the end of the day, we're, the electors are the ones who often get, I mean, y'all get some of it, but we get the wrath of the public and it's their tax dollars. And so we have to be as efficient and effective as possible. That is our burden, both staff and electants, and we have to do it responsibly. So while I appreciate the internal, and I think there are some changes coming, council needs to be consistently updated. We cannot approve budgets, we cannot increase taxes, we cannot ask the community to pay for things when then things don't get delivered. It breaks trust and it makes folks not believe in government. So when then, when we do want another bond in a few years, they're going to vote it down, right? Because what are you, what are you paying for? Something that's going to be built 15 years late? So, and, and the NC DOT thing, I get it. But at the end of the day, there was a trail built after Helene and NC DOT had to do reviews there. So at some point, whatever pressure needs to happen, we have a new division engineer. Several of us sit on these boards. We have relationships where they're needed and we need to do a better job collaborating and communicating electives to staff. We understand that there are limitations to what y'all can do. And so then there is the politics of these things and that is a component of the work. So I appreciate everything that staff's done and I expect some real clear wins in the next year and movement on projects. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the intentionality and of the approach that you've outlined here, the pivot of how we'll be reporting and receiving the reports. I want to emphasize the low hanging fruit here, which is even before we get to the stage of what Councilmember Riss was speaking to, figuring out how are we going to pivot when there's a delay, just the communication. I think that's one of the biggest things I hear is, I think, I think people, I think people understand that there's a lot of different factors. These projects are complicated, there's a lot of stakeholders, there's a lot of entities that are involved. But so many people that I hear from are frustrated just because they don't, they don't know. We don't know on a lot of projects what's happening, why something has been delayed. To the mayor's point, I mean, is it NC DOT? Who gets involved at that point? So I think, I think that, you know, is sort of the lower hanging fruit here is what I would want to emphasize here is just when there is a delay, that we get to learn about it, that we get to learn about it and why it is. And is there some other option? If not, okay, at least there's a communication on, on that and people can understand. So, but again, I appreciate, I appreciate folks like Mr. McKeel coming and, you know, pushing us on, on this as well as others. And again, the thoughtfulness and the intentionality of, you know, we see this report, it's not working to the extent that it should, and we're going to pivot and start doing this in a new way. So, so thank you.
I hate that you're having to stand up there and take all of this, J.J., because I know that you came up just to talk about the new tool. So this is not like aimed at you or anyone in particular. I, I just want to like absolutely agree with what my colleagues have stated. And I was going to say something similar to what everyone has said about folks understanding delays and the transparency being the important part. I am curious, though, that we knew that there were issues with this tool, that we decided to release it anyway, and also we left these mistakes in it. I mean, it hasn't been updated, there still says green on all of these ones that were talked about today. And so I'm just kind of curious about that. And then I know you said that there was going to be about a year-long rollout for the new system. And so like, maybe you just could be a little bit more detailed about what we're going to do in the interim.
Sure. So when we made the decision that we could not use the current system anymore, which did generate that, it was too late in the process to collect all the new information from our project managers. There are a lot of project managers who are contributing to, to this report. And so we did make the decision to go with the information that we had and that had been consistent with what we had previously provided, following the same, same guidelines as the project managers had used before. The delay between the data collection on the Q4 report and when it, when you actually receive it is, is longer because of the recess. And so it, I know it doesn't seem like that was a long time ago. But we are in three weeks going to start collecting the new information for the new quarterly report, which will be wholly different. So I did mention a year-long process. That's to stand up the ultimate financial reporting system. The report that, that we're talking about, which will clean up much of this, you will receive at the close of the first quarter. So approximately, what, six weeks after, after the close of the first quarter? So what, early November, I think?
Okay, so the project managers already have the new, or they at least have new guidance of?
Format.
Okay.
And, and again, much of the information isn't fundamentally different. Some of it is, like, collecting the original completion date and actually keeping track of it. And again, this is not to say that it's not tracked anywhere. This, I'm, I'm speaking only about this quarterly stoplight report. But this will be a way for us to have it to improve accountability, improve communication, transparency for y'all. Because again, we are in budget, we're very much a go-between in, in this process. And so we can play a convening and communicating role. And we hope to really improve on that in the beginning of next quarter.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman, did you?
Thank you, and I appreciate the explanation and my colleagues' comments. I just want to add that I think what, I think, so I don't, I don't want, want to repeat everything. But what I do want to say is, is that the communication piece is not limited to just the communication office. Making sure that there is a way to navigate or at least have some open line of communication with our engagement team might be helpful. And just making, and also just knowing like, there's going to be delays. What I think I heard most in Mr. McKeel's presentation was the changes and the misrepresentation are the main concern. are the main concerns that I'm following up on. And then just knowing like, is, if this rollout is going to be automated, it sounds like it's going to be some automation in there. There are new tools you can use, and I would love to have a conversation on that, if we can do that offline. But I understand the consistency is key, and I want to make sure that we're not sacrificing consistency for truth, so to speak. Like there's, yeah, that's a little bit wonky, but yeah, I understand, you know, that the process is the process. And whatever's happening with NCDOT, I mean, there are many levers that you can use. I would also add the, and I'm just trying to make sure, that also matching this process up with stakeholders prior to and post, making sure that there's no kind of drag in information because I feel like what held up Third, Fourth Creek was that some folks got the information and others didn't. And then you had to go back and have conversations and, yeah, there was a lot of back, there was a lot of back and forth in that. And just trying to make sure. And then I'm hearing that the project managers are the point of update. There has to be, there has to be some automation there too, because I don't want, what I, what I want to be clear is, the project managers doing their own updating doesn't feel very audit friendly. There should be some, yeah, I'm going to keep saying automation. So hoping that whatever's coming forward, we'll have that included. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Caballero?
Yeah, just real quick, when we are done with the processes around the communications piece, ensuring the public is also aware that this has been updated, so especially our advocates who are, you know, they're, they're very involved. And, and so they can also see that the tool has been updated and that we have followed through with the thing we were going to say, or going to do, sorry.
Councilman, will you finish? All right, Councilman Freeman, you.
And then also making sure that wherever communications is dialing in, I would love to have more communications to our boards, committees, and commissions. I think that there's kind of a flat layer to staff and council, but those volunteers who are engaged should also be getting that update as well. I think that'll help in making sure that that, there's some, some background, some back and forth there.
Councilman Rist?
So just to confirm, so for the first quarter of the next fiscal year, we will see some, the new version of the stoplight report, we will see?
Yes.
Yeah. And is that also, is that available in the interim, or is that, is that going to be available for the first time in that new first quarter?
That'll be, that'll be the first time that that data is collected and collated, yes.
And presented, okay, thank you.
Mr. Scott, next fiscal year or this fiscal year? Sorry, I wanted to get.
First quarter of FY '26.
Yeah, this fiscal year. I'm sorry, when you said next, I wanted to be clear.
Sorry, yeah, only because we're talking about '25.
We've been talking about last for the year.
Colleagues, anyone else? All right, thank you all for a great presentation. Colleagues, our next presentation is slated for 30 minutes. I'm going to call a break until 3:00 PM, and we'll start right at 3:00 PM and then go right into our presentation. I'll yield back to the mayor at that time as well. Thank you. We're adjourned till, we're in recess till 3:00. Did you? Oh. No, I can't hear you.
I love this color. Well, I told me, I was like, I don't know what I'm supposed to show. I was like, I'm not trying to brush it.
I love this color.
Well, I told me, I was like, I don't know what I'm supposed to show. I was like, I'm not trying to brush it.
I love this color.
Well, I told me, I was like, I don't know what I'm supposed to show. I was like, I'm not trying to brush it.
Hey, hi, did you?
I did not miss this.
It is based on the case, but some people read it directly, and that's what was true. It's just.
Well, y'all get it.
Of course.
Yeah.
All right, friends, it's 3:00 PM. If we'll come back to order. Where's the council? Hold on a second. Colleagues, if you can hear me, you'll report back to the chamber. All right. All right, we're back in session. Item number 22 is Western Intake Partnership Project Update. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Members of Council, Don Greeley, Department of Water Management. We're here to talk about where we are and give you an update on the Western Intake Partnership Project. There'll be a number of important agenda items coming to you this fall, so we wanted to give you kind of a refresher about where we are, what's been accomplished, and what's coming ahead. Prior to starting, I did want to also mention that also here is Sid Miller, who's been our project manager, Assistant Director in Water Management, as well as Jeff Atkins, who's been the project manager with HDR for our program manager. Both of them have done an outstanding job through this project, dealing with all of our consultants, all the regulatory agencies, you know, local, state, and federal, as well as all the outreach that they've done with the community, with the construction community, with our local businesses and our minority businesses, making them aware of this project as we now move and transition out of the preliminary engineering into more hardcore design and potential construction. I'd also like to thank our city attorney's office, because they've been working closely with us for all the agreements with our other utility partners, as well as the finance department, as well as the General Services Real Estate Group, who we work closely with along the way for our project. So to give you an overall update of what we'll be talking about today, we'll be kind of giving you an, as I mentioned, where we are, where the state is of the numerous agreements and construction, design elements, and then what's coming upfront. So feel free to ask questions along the way or save them for the end. Either way, it works for me. A quick refresher, you know, Jordan Lake allocations are up here. The round four allocations, you know, were given out in 2017. The city got 16.5 million gallons of water in the allocation process. The current intake that Cary Apex has is not large enough to take out the water that's needed for the Western Partners, which is us, Owassa, Chatham County, and Pittsboro. So, you know, we went and, you know, needed to have another intake built on the west side of Jordan Lake. And there are only two locations that the Corps of Engineers were going to allow intakes, one on the east side, one on the west side. So there is currently about nine MGD unallocated with the reservoir for the water supply pool in Jordan Lake. There is the modeling potential, similar to Falls Lake, that potentially at a future date, that there could be some modeling done to increase that water supply pool, but it wouldn't be very significant. It would be shared both on the east, eastern utilities and the western utilities as well. So the overall project is building a new intake on Jordan Lake, building a new treatment plant adjacent to the lake near the intake, and then pumping the water back to Durham, as well as making internal improvements to our distribution system to be able to handle the water coming in to our system. So it's, you know, roughly, you know, almost 17 miles of pipeline coming back into town, and then we'll have to build over 10 miles of pipeline within the city to accommodate that because the water's coming in at a higher pressure. And I'll be talking about that later in the presentation.
Director, would you lift your microphone up a little?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, we'll be building a raw water intake and a raw water pump station out at the intake, which is well into Chatham County, with a regional facility. The water transmission line back to Durham, as I said, over 17 miles, we'll be building two elevated water tanks as part of that project. The actual intake is out on the lake. We discussed both with the Corps of Engineers and North Carolina Parks about whether we would have, the intake would be in the, would be on the lake itself, or would it be on the shore in the park area? And we got direction to put it out in the lake, which is similar to the intake that Cary Apex has. So the intake is going to be out in the lake, and will, the pump station will be, you know, off North Carolina Parks property and Army Corps property. So the location is where the old New Hope Creek, so it's at the lowest part of the lake. So we can pull water in should Jordan Lake ever get really low. But that didn't happen during the drought of '07 and '08, because Jordan Lake has had such a large watershed that it wasn't impacted like the rest of the area was during COVID. Because the watershed is so large, basically any drop of water that falls as it goes across North Carolina hits their watershed. So very resilient water supply. That's an illustration of the tower that will be constructed out on the lake. This is kind of an aerial shot of where the regional facility will be constructed, the treatment plant.
Reporting stopped.
Should I continue? Okay. It's a 121 acre site, it's currently owned by Owassa, so we're in the process of finalizing this land sale from Owassa to Durham for the property. Phase one for the treatment plant will be, we'll be building a 20 million gallon a day treatment plant, but the site plan, or for the plant, has been ultimately expansion is out to 77 million gallons. So we've completed an ongoing water quality sampling in Jordan Lake, so we know what type of treatment options we need to do with the treatment plant, as well as looking at what we need to do as far as PFAS in the Jordan Lake water and how to treat that. This is a rendering of what the initial phase and footprint of the treatment plant will be located adjacent to the lake. You know, we completed the original memorandum of understanding for WIP with the partners. All of the, at the bottom of the screen, we had four major projects going on that have been completed. The governance, the intake and transmission preliminary engineering, the water treatment plant preliminary engineering, and the vitamont permitting. And we're completing all of those and moving into design and construction. And up to this point, all the costs associated with that were distributed between the four utilities that's shown on the screen there. In Chatham County, we executed an interlocal agreement with Chatham County back in 2023 that allows the city to purchase property within Chatham County, as well as condemn land in Chatham County. And that's mostly for the transmission main as we go along and need easements and construction easements, and for the, potentially for the tanks as well. We've done rezoning of the property to allow the treatment plant there in Chatham County, as well as having approval for a septic system for the administration building that's there. And we're currently in negotiations for the parcel that will be within Chatham County for the tank. So what's changed over the last several years? Well, for Durham, no changes. For Owassa, they've chosen not to participate in phase one, because they're currently, their long-range water supply plan, they don't need their allocation at this time. For Pittsboro, who really needed the water when we started this project, they've merged with Sanford. The Tri River Water is their water authority. So they are now, Tri River is now the overseer and owner of, and providing water and sewer services to the town of Pittsboro. Chatham County also has merged with Tri River, and they were also going to be a participant, you know, with the initial construction. But now that they've merged with Sanford, Sanford has done a number of improvements over the last several years. that allows the city to purchase property within Chatham County, as well as condemn land in Chatham County. And that's mostly for the transmission main as we go along and need easements and construction easements and potentially for the tanks as well. We've done rezoning of the property to allow the treatment plant there in Chatham County, as well as having approval for a septic system for the administration building that's there. And we're currently in negotiations for the parcel that will be within Chatham County for the tank. So what's changed over the last several years? Well, for Durham, no changes. For Owassa, they've chosen not to participate in Phase One. Because currently, their long-range water supply plan, they don't need their allocation at this time. For Pittsburgh, who really needed the water when we started this project, they've merged with Sanford. The Tri River Water is their water authority. So they are now, Tri River is now the overseer and owner of and providing water and sewer services to the town of Pittsburgh. Chatham County also has merged with Tri River, and they were also going to be a participant, you know, with the initial construction. But now that they've merged with Sanford, Sanford has done a number of improvements over the last several years, a lot of that around for the economic growth that was occurring in Chatham County. Then FAS, Wolf Speed, et cetera. They got a large grant from the state of North Carolina to expand their water plant. So the needs for coming into the Western Intake Partnership at this point have now been minimized.
I can ask a quick question to educate me on something. Would our prerogative to condemn property in Chatham County be applicable to property we don't own? I mean, if we can own it, what are we condemning?
If we had to get an easement and the owner, you know, we couldn't agree on whether the terms of the monetary.
They would allow us to?
Then it allows us to condemn the property.
In Chatham, okay.
Right. Without having to go through the Chatham County Commissioners.
Right. Because they won't sell it to us, then we can, okay, gotcha.
And that's per state law.
Sure, sure.
So that's certainly, having Pittsburgh and both Chatham County had a major need for participating in the Western Intake project, and that kind of changed the landscape pretty dramatically as far as Durham is concerned. So, you know, we are, for the most part, going alone. Tri River may or may not participate, but a lot of the negotiations and a lot of the work on all the agreements is to make sure that Durham is compensated when they come in at a later date and they will be able to, you know, pay for our investment that we have.
So Phase One is, at this point, is just Durham?
Potentially a little bit with Tri River. So we'll know that in the next couple of months. As I mentioned, they're right now leaning heavily towards participating with just a million gallons. But that still is a significant amount of money in building a treatment plant.
So does that mean that we then bear more costs upfront? Is that partly what's?
Yes.
And then that we will, when they come into the partnership, they would then, we'd be reimbursed for those costs?
Right. We will work out a financial agreement with whatever entity, whenever each entity comes in, and then we'll recover all of our costs that have been accumulating over the years, as well as, you know, ongoing costs.
And so, because I think on the previous slide it showed that the original MOU has now expired, right?
No, we've completed that and the terms.
The term.
The terms of how the different entities can onboard and how the financing would be set up.
But that original MOU, it did end, right?
That was completed.
Right.
The agreement was completed and ready to be executed.
And so, and we're now entering like a new MOU, is that?
Well, we'll be executing that MOU. Right? If they say 1 million gallons, then we'll execute that MOU with Tri River, Sanford. Does that make sense, I hope? Is that confusing? Okay, we'll keep going. All right. For the, you know, as I stated, we moved out of the preliminary engineering into engineering. Earlier, we approved, the council approved doing the amendment with Hazen to move forward with a traditional design bid build for the transmission line and the booster pump station and the elevated tanks. And they're underway working on the design. So I think the field survey is almost, is nearing completion at this point. As far as the treatment plant itself and the intake and raw water pump station, we've been working with the partners and HDR. We decided that the best way to keep this project on schedule, which is to try to bring all the facilities online by 2031, was to use progressive design bid build. And what progressive design build is, is you hire the contractor and the engineer together as a team upfront for the whole project. And we are in the middle of that. We have, for the treatment plan, we've already advertised the progressive design build contracts. We've made the selection, and now we're currently negotiating the contract with that team. So, and that's one of the items that we'll be bringing to you this fall. We're currently just received the SOQs for the intake. There were eight firms that came in that submitted on the intake, and there were four firms that submitted on the treatment plant. So we're currently starting to review of the SOQs that have come in.
What's SOQ?
Statement of Qualifications, sorry. The overall schedule, I think that's kind of hard to see, but it basically shows you where we are with permitting, treatment plant, the raw water intake, and the bottom is the transmission, all of which kind of coming online in 2031. Another part of, a big part of this, of course, is executing a non-recreational outgrant with the Army Corps of Engineers and the state of North Carolina. And there were some delays with that between the state of North Carolina and the Army Corps. I won't go into details about that, but those have been now hammered out, and now those applications are moving forward. There's also some mitigation that we're working with for North Carolina Parks. To be able to build the intake, we'll be having to close down Vista Point Recreation Area for about a three-year period. And that is one of the largest recreational areas on Jordan Lake. And it's a major boating location, as well as the only sailboat ramp on the lake. So we're, as you can see here, that's where the raw water pump station is, the intake. So we'll be having to use the park right there on the tip of Vista Point. What's highlighted in red is the construction area that we believe will be impacting them, so that we're impacting their revenue stream, they're impacting their ability to launch sailboats, as well as impacting the overall site, which there's also an RV site that they feel that they need to close down. So we'll be working out the impacts to them and the compensation for closing for that three-year time period. Three years. So overall, you know, the, most of the, we'll be building as part of that compensation will be for the construction of another sailboat launch at another facility, the extra traffic and the other additional manpower that's needed to man those other recreational sites, because there'll be higher levels of activities in those sites, because this will be closed. There's a little expectation that having to close the recreational facility for three years, that when it's reopened, it's going to look newer and fresher. And we've had those discussions with the City Manager's Office about that we feel is a reasonable request. So we're negotiating the terms of some improvements there, both in the shower facilities and the RVs facilities and some of the, at Vista Point. So when it opens up, it'll look like an outfitted new facility. We're also working on an interlocal agreement specifically for the intake itself. And we anticipate that Tri River, Owassa, and Durham will all sign that intake agreement. And why is that important? Because that shows that, hopefully that'll show to the General Assembly that this truly is a regionalization, a regional project, and that maybe will allow us to, maybe will potentially get some grant funding for the construction of the intake itself. So similar to what the grant that they gave Tri River for their water plant expansion. So the next step is to take those to the various boards this year and the draft governance interlocal agreement. So all of that will come out later this fall. The governance interlocal agreement, it defines the role of how partners, either owner reserve capacity as they go forward and come onboard. Durham is going to be the owner of the facility. So how are we, how we execute the contracts, how we expand the plant, the terms of what upfront costs that they have to pay us when they're coming onboard, and how do they schedule payments if we're going to finance it with them? So all of that is kind of covered within that agreement. And as I said, that's been reviewed both by the Finance Department and the City Attorney's Office. As far as the land sale agreement, we're just about that close to agreeing on a final price and expect to have that later this year. One thing I did want to just highlight a little bit about, you know, we talked about the project and bringing it into Durham, and I did mention earlier in the presentation that there are impacts to our distribution system. So while we're, over the next 20 years, we could be bringing in anywhere from 8 million gallons up to 27 million gallons on any given day. And that amount of water coming in to the southern part of our system, which is at a lower elevation, and that water is coming in at a higher pressure, has a big impact on our system. So we've had to do a lot of analysis with McKimmon Creed, who's been our hydraulic modeler. We've been working with him for over a year now. We just finished the final workshop, actually yesterday, to look at water age and how the water is going to be mixed in the system between, we have Jordan Lake water coming in, we have treatment coming from the Williams Plant and treatment coming from the Brown Plant. How does that water mix and does it cause any problems with the system? And also looking at how all of that affects all the different pressures in all the individual homes in and around Southern Durham. So as I said, we looked at, you know, future demands and how the growth is going to be there as well as part of that modeling effort. A lot of the variables we talked about is the, you know, demand, both our system demand and when is Owassa going to come onboard. We're going to have to create what essentially is a southern pressure zone, a new pressure zone in our distribution system to make sure that the pressures don't get too high to our customers in an area of Southern Durham. We'll have to have some pressure-reducing valves to ensure that those customers in that southern pressure zone don't get too high a pressure. We have some main size, pipe size selections that were done, and whether or not, how we would get water when Owassa came onboard, how they would get water from our system and where that pipeline would be. So all of those are some of the variables that were considered. There were 264 different model variations that were done, looking at all this from 2030 to 2040 to 2050. And then it's simplified, whether or without Owassa, do we do tanks or no tanks? Do we have a dedicated main and an undedicated main, et cetera, et cetera? So anyway, this is a map that just shows when we look at where the existing pressure is at any given home based on the elevation that the homes are in Durham. So as water came in, those dots would change color depending on an impact. So we went through all of this modeling to make sure that we weren't impacting our customers as we bring these facilities online, not just in 2031, but up through 2050. So as I said, we just finished the final modeling results yesterday, so they'll be working on the report and moving forward from there. So what's coming? So what's coming for council will be the land sale agreement, and we think that's going to be in excess of $4 million. There'll be the intake ILA, which is the agreement about with Owassa and Tri River on the intake. There'll be the governance in our local agreement with Tri River if they're participating in the project. We'll have the regional water tube implant contract, the progressive design build. We expect the initial, first initial phase of the contract to be $50 million. And ultimately, that'll, with the different phases of the project, you know, the overall project cost is around $500 million. On the intake, that'll, we think the initial will be $16 million, and then the overall project will be $136 million. We'll have the initial internal water improvements, which we're also going to do progressive design build, so we can ensure that those, the internal improvements are ready when the treatment plant and the intake are ready to go online. That's be around $73 million, up to $73 million. And then the parks mitigation is going to be around $4.7 million. So significant amount of money, a huge investment for the city. It's a generational project for the city to ensure that we have adequate water supply for the next 20, 30 years. And we wanted to ensure that we have the safety net to make sure that we are getting, we're being compensated as the other utilities come online with the facility. With that, I'll open up the questions.
Director, thank you for the presentation, a major necessary undertaking for our city. Colleagues, Councilmember Cook, you want to get us started?
Yes, I know y'all have put so much work into this, so thank you. I had a couple of questions about maybe the cost of Phase One. I'm wondering, first of all, if we had thought about a plan where we did not have those partners or if that has drastically changed the cost for us upfront?
There was an expectation with the financial modeling that we've done each year as far as the rates. And as things played out, we have adjusted, but we've done the rate modeling with, both with partners and without partners, just to see the disparity and what we needed to do. And it became more significant as we got closer to this kind of time, this past year or so. And certainly as Tri River, when Pittsburgh first turned, there was the potential of them talking to Tri River, and that really, we knew that was going to really shift financially the burden back on Durham. So we've done that with the modeling. We've worked closely with the Finance and Budget Office to make sure that we're minimizing the rate impacts. And what you saw with the rates this past spring for this year was that was reflected what I presented here today.
Yeah, I remember that.
So nothing's going to change from what we projected.
Okay, and this, I just have some financial questions. Sorry if this is like too much, but, so is everything included in that Phase One? Like I'm talking about purchasing the land and the compensation for the Vista Point for their loss and services and all of that stuff?
All of that's programmed into our financial model through 2031.
Okay.
Yes.
And then do we collect interest?
Yes.
Okay, good. That was, okay, that was what I was wondering the whole time, because I was like, oh, gosh, like this amount of money is not going to be the same amount of money in 10 years, right?
Right, and the interest on the revenue bonds that the city will have to sell.
Oh, okay.
So all of those costs
Okay.
are going, are, you know, are going to be recouped eventually. Now, if, you know, I go back, I won't go back, but early on, when I first showed the allocations, Chatham County and Pittsburgh had very large allocations.
Right.
And Tri River is going to, definitely is going to need that to help with, you know, their planning for Pittsburgh and Chatham County as for utility. You know, they're catching up with their planning, because, you know, all of those, that takeover happened recently, so they're doing the modeling. So we'll know probably early next year or maybe sometime next year kind of when they would probably be onboard or wanting to increase, you know, capacity at the treatment plant. And basically, they would notify us at least five years in advance that they need that capacity. They would, we would negotiate the terms with them. Durham would expand the plant since it's our plant, and then they would reimburse us upfront for the expansion 100%.
I see.
And then they would be charged for our operation costs and the water that we're producing back to them as an ongoing cost. But when they do that, we'll also be recouping our initial investment costs as well.
Okay, that makes sense to me, thank you. You had a slide, and we went through it quite quickly, but it said the allocations have been separated from the NRO applications. I was just wondering if you could talk about that a little more.
I might ask Sid to step up and talk about that a little bit. And thankfully, Tim is here to talk about financing.
You're doing great. You answered all my questions. Very reticent to come to this microphone.
Good afternoon, council.
Hello.
So the, oh, yes, sorry. I'm Sid Miller, Assistant Director for Water Management. So the regulations around Jordan Lake are complicated. Fundamentally, Jordan Lake is owned by the federal government. And the state bought the water supply storage in that lake. So the state has its own rules for how it allocates that water supply storage to units of local government in North Carolina, right? to units of local government in North Carolina, right? The Corps in the last 10 years decided it can only have agreements with the allocation holder of the lake, which is the state. But the state doesn't own and operate water facilities. Local governments do that. So that means there has to be sub-agreements between the state and any unit of, unit of local government that wants to build something and operate something. So historically, that has only been the towns of Cary and Apex. We're breaking new ground, literally. And so in the past, the Corps had never reviewed and approved the state's process for sub-allocation. And now they want to do that. And the state is really not happy about that. And so our whole project relies on permitting from the Corps of Engineers. These non-recreational out grant requests are, that's what they're called. So we can't build anything in the lake unless the Corps of Engineers says, yeah, you can build something in the lake. The Corps can't tell us that, has to tell the state that. And the Corps, so anyway, all our non-recreational out grant requests that we need from the Corps of Engineers got wrapped up in the mess between the Corps of Engineers and the state of North Carolina. And only until recently, in the last two months, that the Corps finally agree, oh, we'll allow you to separate those issues. We will actually look at your non-recreational out grant requests that we actually submitted over a year ago.
Wow, okay, that is helpful. Yeah.
The way you walk to the podium makes total sense now.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, and if you want to know any more about that, feel free to call me.
Wow, okay, fascinating, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wow, okay.
There's a lot there, he put it very succinctly.
Yes.
He could have expounded probably 30 minutes on that.
Yeah, I believe it. My final question is, I guess you talked really briefly about design and stages. And I just kind of like, I mean, this is not my area of expertise, but what we, what I know that we're seeing is, first of all, changes in, in water screening and what is allowed and not allowed. And so we're seeing sort of like things on what we have to produce, but also on the side of technology and how we do our water processing. And I know is changing very rapidly. And so I was just kind of wondering, as y'all are building this facility many years down the line, that might incorporate technology that we don't even have yet? Like kind of what y'all are doing to, to balance?
As much as possible, we accommodated that in the design of the treatment plant. So when you look at the footprint of the 77 million gallon treatment plant, you'll actually see footprints for things like RO. What else did we include, Jeff? Could you come to the mic and talk about, just a little bit about what we accommodated? There's a lot of acronyms, so I don't want to say them wrong.
That's okay.
So Jeff Atkins, I'm with HDR, the Program Manager for the Western Intake Partnership. So what Don's alluding to is we, we have planned for treatment with the regulations and the technologies that are in place today, anticipating that there's going to be change. We already know it's very dynamic with PFAS, for example. And so in order to be able to account for a larger plant, perhaps different regulations, different standards for water quality, technologies like reverse osmosis, ion exchange, and different kinds of technologies which utilize carbon, granulated activated carbon or powder activated carbon, are both ways that we can, we can achieve a high level of quality for PFAS and other types of chemicals that we may want to remove in the future that aren't required or even known of today.
So all of those have been incorporated into where, how the layout of the plant is. So there's space on the plant to accommodate those future processes should the regulations change and we need to bring those future processes online. And as, as you mentioned, Councilmember Cook, there could be technologies in 10 years that we don't even know about that will replace some of those technologies. But there's space on that master planning to accommodate those at a later date.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. I think those are all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Baker, you got anything?
Yeah. Yeah, when you said, Mayor Proton, when you said this is major undertaking, I just, that's all I can think of with all of this is what an enormous project. You know, we need, we need food, water, and shelter to survive. And, and here we are, we're talking about one of the most basic human needs, which is, which is water that's being directly provided by local government. Can we just go back to square one?
Sure.
And I, first of all, I want to say you've provided us numerous updates and I appreciate that. And I, I hope that we can continue that. These are very, very informative and helpful. And just going back to the explanation of why do we need this? Why are we doing this? If you could just give us the big picture there again.
Okay, we have, you know, with our two water supply lakes, both Little River and Lake Mickey, we are basically nearing our capacity to be able to provide for growth of the city. So, you know, and to be able to, without this project, we would be in a period probably where we would have to initiate our water shortage response plan, which is we don't have enough water to meet the demand on a very regular basis and almost maybe even constantly. So we are at the point where that, we only have so much water at both of those lakes. So we need to have another water supply on hand to be able to continue to grow as a city.
Thank you. And then we've talked about the intake. We've talked about the site and the process of development and some of the complications there, closing off recreation space for three years, those kinds of things. Can you talk a little bit about what we're thinking about regarding the actual treatment plant itself? What kinds of considerations are going into it? Innovative practices, accessibility, if that's a thing, sustainability? I'm going to show a little bit of naivete here, but I know that there's a water treatment plant that's underground with above-ground recreation. I'm guessing that's prohibitively expensive.
Yes.
But I'm just curious about what kind of thought is going into what, what the treatment plant itself is going to look like.
Certainly. One thing I didn't highlight is, you know, you're all familiar with LEED, right? For building structure. And the building is, the administrative building is being built to the current city standards, which is gold. Public Works Projects has a similar program called Envision. And it's taking kind of the LEED principles and applying it to public works type projects. We embraced that Envision for this project. And there's a number of criteria, and we'd be happy to bring back and talk about the different criteria that are in there. And they're very expansive and across the community. Talking about access, talking about how you're impacting the community. What kind of improvement is the facility's going to bring to the community? So some of our outreach, when we're out in Chatham County, we were listening to what were their needs? You know, as we build the large diameter water lines up and down the roads in Chatham County, which ones were going to be on their open space and trails plan? You know, where do they, any road widens that are needed? How about access, better access to the recreational facility? There's a, on C4th Road, which is right up the street, is a high school that was built after we started looking at this project. You know, how do we impact them? And how do we incorporate maybe any improvements that would help that community? So the Envision process is very broad. And we are, it's bronze, silver, gold, platinum. And we are currently at gold nearing platinum. So, so, and it's a very rigorous process to submit all the documentation because you have to submit it from the beginning of what you've done prior to the project, starting through design, through construction. You know, what are you doing at the construction site? You know, are you recycling? You know, how are you minimizing dust? How are you minimizing traffic? So it's very broad, very comprehensive. And we'd be happy to, happy to bring that back and talk about that the next time we give a project update and talk about that program.
That'd be great. Once again, thank you so much for your work, for your updates, and look forward to learning more as it progresses.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cabir?
Thank you so much for the update and why I'm always so impressed with what we do with water in the city of Durham. It's one of the things we do best. Is there, is there a world where they, they don't need the intake, right? Because they've already, the communities that, you know, Pittsboro and Chatham and.
Owassa.
Owassa, right? Is there, is, because they're, you know, not going in on Phase 1, which I understand there's a plan like, okay, well, this is how we bring them online and there's a cost for that.
Right.
Is there a world where like the state gives the Sanford Plant, the Tri River Plant even more state money? And so then they don't need our intake? Like have we thought about that within our financial modeling?
Right, I mean, certainly that's, that is a risk. But, you know, there's, you know, they have not indicated that to us at this time, right? There's a limited amount of space that they have to expand their plant. And, you know, their plan is they have a river intake. So how much the state would allow them to increase their river intake, especially knowing at this time, knowing that they have allocations in Jordan Lake? And certainly increasing river allocation, certainly, you know, part of the outreach we've always done through the Jordan Lake Partnership and now the Triangle Water Partnership, is do a lot of outreach with the downstream utilities down to Fayetteville, all the way down to Wilmington, keeping them abreast about what we're doing up in the Triangle. But certainly they're very, you know, all of their concerns are, you know, are, is there enough water still coming down the Cape Fear River that they can pull water out of the river? So we're continuing to do that. So there's, there's, there's a lot there. Of course, that could be a risk. If, but we don't believe that'll, at this juncture, we don't believe that'll happen. Owassa, they know they don't need to use the water right now, but they're afraid of losing their allocation. So that's why they want to sign in on the intake ILA to show that they're committed into Jordan Lake, to the state, because they're fearful that if they didn't participate in some way, that the next round of allocation, for that remaining allocation, that they're not participating in anything, you're not using it for 20, 30 years. We have these other communities that need it now, they would lose their allocation.
Thank you for that. And that, to your, so goes back to your earlier point that the Jordan Lake, like the, the quality of that water source is clearly better than the Tri River. Because of, so, so some of that also then plays in, like what people have access to and what other water sources they have access to may not be as high quality. And so it might make sense for them.
Right, and the, and the cost of, for them to expand their facilities versus the cost of and paying for the facilities where we are, where we already have. Like the intake, we're building to the ultimate size. We're putting in not all the pumps and not all the electrical equipment. So we're not, there's some things you just have to build to ultimate, like the tunnel out to the middle of the intake and things like that for the initial investment. But we're, just like, we're only building 20 million gallons a day in the treatment plant. Ultimately, it could be 77 million. But we're also scaling back what's the inside, the raw water intake pumping station, so we can add pumps and intakes later on.
Okay, thank you so much, those are all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Freeman, did you have anything?
Thank you, I really appreciate the presentation. I would say that I'm excited because I get to share this with some of the leaders across the state in a couple of weeks. And I think it's really innovative, the way the Tri River has come together to try and, I guess, pool the funds to do this work. And so I'm happy that we're leading. And I did have one question. Are we locked into this model that you're sharing today? This, this model scenario?
As far as?
As far as, as like, does this became, become the, the one way? Because you said there were like 276 different models.
Oh, for the, for the, excuse me, for the improvements within our system?
Yes.
We, we pretty much settled on that. But once again, it's a, it's a 20-year projection. So in a couple, once the project comes online, and then we'll have initial, and we'll be able to actually have real information with our collection system. You know, you model it, but then you have to look at, did the modeling reflect what's actually happening? And we'll have that. And then potentially, growth patterns might change a little bit. So we'll be changing maybe some of that and tweaking it. That's why we're constantly updating our master planning.
That's good. And then I was just going to say that it's, it's really helpful to see the breakdown as far as I was looking at the, all the variables. And I wanted to just ask, what would be, I guess, what exactly is the deciding factor in the main size? Is it just, like, are you using population growth based on today or?
We, you know, we, 2020, I think we launched our Long Range Water Resources Plan. It got put on pause with COVID because the comp plan got delayed as well. So once the comp plan was completed, the Durham Comprehensive Plan, we were able to then incorporate the Durham Comprehensive Plan into our Long Range Water Resources Plan. And, and that's looking at demand across the whole city, where development's going to happen, how much water we're going to need. And as those plans evolve, we'll be updating that Long Range Water Supply Plan and using that as an input into our modeling and what we need in our capacity. So that's a kind of an ongoing effort that we'll continue, just keep doing as we go along.
And then I noted, you indicated that the contract was set about, what is that, 152 million? How do you, I guess, how do you, how do you foresee? I, like, I don't know how you're going to be able to figure it out, but how do you foresee the impacts of tariffs on that cost?
It's very hard, hard to know. We've, it's been talked about a lot. And, and also just delivery. One of the things that we are trying to do, which is also one of the decision-making that we went into the progressive design build, is to do some early out purchasing. Because as costs escalate for some of the more expensive pieces of process equipment that we could maybe order that early. And one of the things we talked about and questioning with all of the different combination of firms when they came in was, you know, we would like to do that. How are you going to handle that? And, you know, how would they store that material? And how would they, once it's stored, how would they do the necessary maintenance to make sure that when it was installed, we would have the correct warranties for that? So, so a lot of that is, hopefully, we'll be able to mitigate some of that because, you know, it's 2025 and online, there's going to be a lot of potential change and impacts to the construction costs. So we're going to try to mitigate that as much as possible, to buy as much early on as we can.
And I would just like to draw that back to some of the conversation we were having earlier. If Tim could just say, would that be included? Or could that be included in something like a carryover?
Most of the funding is out of the CIP. So the funds are naturally, once they're approved by council, they're carried over.
I just wanted to make sure that the full council understands like that's the type of thing that, that will come forward and making sure we don't leave out the impacts, you know, acknowledging that tariffs are here.
Yes.
And that we're making adjustments based on the needs that we have for the future. So don't want to leave that out.
That was actually one of the questions that we had during the selection processes.
Yeah, thank you.
Is how they, how would, how, what would they were going to do to minimize costs if these kind of came to pass?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Thank you, Mr. Greeley, for the presentation as always. And I also want to thank the manager for bringing this forward to the council. This is really important to know about this. I know this is pretty technical stuff. It gets pretty scientific in a hurry, but really appreciate you sort of like sharing this with us. And, you know, we had this conversation earlier about, about community and sort of, you know, sort of feelings about these major projects that they're sort of not getting delivered on. I think this is the flip side of the coin. This is like a major, major investment, a major project that most folks have no idea we're doing. But the fact that we're thinking about this and investing in this major, major, essentially, public works project is really, is really a credit to your department and to the leadership of the manager. So I want to thank you for that. The question I had, and you may have answered this already, but I know that in addition to PFAS, there's concern about 1/4 deoxane, right? And I think there was a story on the radio just the other day about that in the, in the Haw River, that whole watershed. So I imagine. So I imagine, so that, so you're, so when you're thinking about water quality, how are you gonna mitigate that? So 1-4 dioxane is like?
Is included, yes.
And is that, and so the, you mentioned earlier potentially having, potentially reverse osmosis that you would engage in to mitigate PFAS. Is that the same, same strategy for 1-4 dioxane or is that a different, what's the?
I'll, I'll point to Jeff, because, once again, that's, it's hard to keep everything in my head. And he's got a little bit more time to think about it when, as he walks to the podium. So for 1-4 dioxane, part of the, I didn't hear the report, but part of the way I've heard about it in the media in the last few years has been, Pittsboro is downstream of some sources of 1-4 dioxane in Burlington and further upstream.
Greensboro, right, yeah.
And, and so the, the treatment facility, you know, we've, we've invested some time and regular monitoring of the lake to understand what it looks like when you take the source that's concentrated in the Haw River. But you also have other ways that water gets into Jordan Lake that are less, that have lower levels of 1-4 dioxane. So overall, it's diluted in the lake. But we do have treatment embedded in the, in our treatment facilities now, not requiring reverse osmosis, but things like ozone infiltration that can address the levels of 1-4 dioxane in the water that the plant produces.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. And then, so Mr. Greeley, for the, for the council, I think you listed a whole bunch of contracts that are essentially gonna be coming to us in the next year or so. So in addition to that, anything else we can do to support you in this project?
Just your continued support, and which has been tremendous. This is a kind of, as I said, it's a generational-type project. A major undertaking for the city, a huge investment, especially since we've got lots, lost some partners along the way, but we've continued on. So just your continued support, which is, you know, been huge. So thank, and thank you all.
And again, thanks for the, I know that we've like increased water rates slightly, right, to begin paying for all this. So like, so the, again, the strategic planning, the foresight is all very much appreciated. And we look forward to continuing to update, so thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Mr. Mayor, you want to final word on this?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, colleagues, for the, the rich conversation today. I've had a lot of things I've been managing in and outside of the meeting. So I'm grateful to Mayor Portem for leading us today. And, yeah, I'm all good. This is, I'm looking forward to the amusement park that's gonna go with this, the water park that's gonna go with this intake project out there. So we're gonna replace the recreation with the additional component to this. So looking forward to that.
All right, I'll work on that.
Appreciate it.
Director, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Good to see. You'll be happy, you know, I haven't gotten the votes yet to take Ms. Lake as the new City Hall, but I'm still working on it. So enjoy that office, buddy.
You're welcome anytime.
Thanks so much. Colleagues, that has, we've exhausted our published agenda for today. Rather than settling the agenda now, I know there were a couple of other matters that we talked about at the beginning of the meeting. Councilmember Cook, you had a matter, but if you don't mind, I'm gonna defer to the manager to do his first, and then we can come to council members. The manager said he had a couple of items as well on the other matters, and then I'll turn to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Portem. I appreciate it. So three quick items. The first is a major oversight on my part that I wish to apologize for. It was an oversight from me to not point out at the beginning of the meeting and recognize our new permanent Director of Communications, Amy Blaylock.
Here, here.
As, as council knows, Amy has been a fixture for the city, a fixture in this department, and then serving as the interim role since Beverly Thompson's retirement in June. And so I'm used to seeing her over there, but that does not decrease the importance of noting the occasion of Amy being named to this role officially. As I captured in my message to each of you yesterday, Amy has been a critical part of this department's success and growth over the years. But despite the fact that Amy is a, an internal candidate, I think some of the most exciting things we vetted with Amy before making this decision are her vision for growing the breadth and the touch of this department, of leaning into, I think, new and as of yet unknown communication tools and strategies. I think I've had conversations with many of you about your thoughts about the fact that it, you know, is just becoming increasingly challenging and complicated, but all the more necessary to get great messaging into the hands of our residents. And I am confident that Amy is up to that challenge. So I want to welcome and congratulate Amy and recognize her in front of you all. I'm really excited to see where she's going to bring us. Thank you, Amy. Thank you. Amy's gonna do a great job. So that was item one. Item two, I just wanted to note, you may have picked this up on your agenda, that you do not have any land use items. There is the utility extension agreement, but no zonings or rezonings, which caught all of us a little bit by surprise on the administration. I wanted to highlight for you that, in discussing that with Director Young, she noted that for, for many years dating back to COVID, we have been, we have had a backlog of planning items for council's review. And the items that had cleared the Planning Commission were then queued up for slots on the city council's agenda. That backlog has been cleared. And as a result, we are now tracking along with the agenda of the Planning Commission. Because the Planning Commission also took a July break, like council did, we are at that point in the workflow that the items that were, that there were no items coming out of the Planning Commission. But I wanted to highlight that for you, because I think for some time, that has been a concern. I know the development community has expressed concern to council about the length of the process. So I didn't want it to pass that, that we are at a, at a place where that backlog has been cleared. And then finally, I've got a slide up in front of you. So I've met with each of you in my one-on-ones through the month of August and had conversations with you about, ironically, I think we talked a good bit earlier today, more transparency, more frequent updates, getting projects in front of council. And so I got your feedback about the first projects that you would like to see highlighted in front of council. Had a number of questions about when they would be coming back. So I just wanted to prepare this overview for you and present, and let you know when these are coming. The Durham Rail Trail Project, an update on that project will be on your October 9, 2025 work session. The Durham Athletic Park feasibility study is scheduled to come forward on your November 6, 2025 work session. I think this may be up for some discussion today, but the, the staff will be, believe will have significant updates to provide on the West Chapel Hill, 505 West Chapel Hill redevelopment process on the 20th. I am, I wanna make some, come back to that one and make some comments before we close. The 2024 bond referendum projects, we will be one year from that referendum at the end of August, October, early November. We're planning an overview on the progress of implementing the bond that will be coming to council. And then an update, since I created this slide, the South LRB Wetland Project update will actually be on your next agenda on September 18th for an overview and update. So it's gonna be sooner than the one I put the slide together. I also wanted to mention, knowing that trails were on the conversation today, that there is a planned update of all city trail projects going to the RAC at their meeting on October 8. And that same presentation comment will be offered to DOST. We don't have that scheduled with DOST yet, but we envision that would be October or November. I do want to come back and talk, there's been, a number of you have brought back to me a conversation about 505 West Chapel Hill. So I wanted to clarify, several of you have mentioned correctly that in your work session in June, you asked that we come back as soon as possible after the break, within the month of August, to have further conversations. Obviously, we did not do that. We have not scheduled that because we don't have, we don't have decision points that responded to council's direction at the June work session that would be ready to brief. And so we, my proposal was that we come back to council as quickly as possible once we've got results from those conversations with NC Preservation and also from staff efforts on, on the master planning that we took forward. I've heard some comments from council members that they felt like an interim conversation would be worthwhile to further discuss whether or not affordable housing is something that should be underway right now. We have been approaching that affordable housing component as part of the master planning process. But obviously, I want to make it clear that the agendas belong to the council. If you would like to add this item at a sooner date, I just would want to set expectations that I don't feel like we have a lot to report out, but that we are working with, with intentionality about being prepared for the next update. I also wanted to let you know that we will be, there will be a column in tomorrow's City Connect updating the public on the process of 505 West Chapel Hill. So there is public communication going out tomorrow. So I wanted to leave that open, as several council members have raised that with me and certainly want to be in a position to respond to council direction if you would like an earlier conversation on that project. That's the update I intended to offer. Happy to answer any questions related to that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Appreciate you. Councilman McCook, I'll yield to you.
Thank you. So I have two matters that I'd like to bring forward. One, as the manager has stated and already knows, is a sooner conversation on 505. I know that we talked about, and I understand the reasonings for not having the meeting in August or having that on the agenda in August. But this is, November 20th is almost three months away from now. And I do want to make sure that if there's any clearer guidance to be given before then, that we are not exhausting staff resources and ensure that we are sort of all in agreement and given guidance. So I would ask that that be put on, I've talked to a couple of y'all about this, but not the next work session, but the work session after, which still gives us a large chunk of time because we have an off week. So that would be, is that right? The 9th, the 9th of October? So that is my proposal, which would be about five or six weeks before the presentation, understanding that, of course, staff will be ready to do a full presentation at that time.
Did you want to raise your other?
Go on. Just clarity, what do we, what, you asked for a conversation to do what?
For a couple of things. The first is that we did say that we were gonna bring it back a lot earlier. And so that was the expectation that was put out for the public. And the second thing is that we had a lot of conversation that day and didn't end up giving a whole lot of guidance. And so if we do want to ensure that we're not kind of like sitting on that lack of decision and staff sort of going in the direction that they can best go with kind of like how none, I don't feel like we were very clear. And so what I don't want to happen is that staff kind of goes down a process of putting a lot of time and effort into doing something that's maybe not exactly aligned. Or if we can give clearer guidance in the meantime, that would be more efficient for staff time. I want to have that conversation as well.
I think my only thing, I went back and watched it, and you're right, we didn't give a lot of clear instruction. But I think that's probably because the process has already been done. So I think I need clarity on, are we going back and rewriting this whole thing again? Are we gonna do the community engagement component again? Are we wiping the initial priorities all over? Which means we have to go back to do community engagement again. And I think I need to understand that we're having a conversation, is it have a conversation? Or are we, like, what is the guidance beyond what's already been done? I think that's what I need clarity on.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that that's part of the, of the issue, is that we sort of left it with this idea that we were segmenting off just the Milton Smalls Building. We had a lot of conversation about affordable housing and moving forward in that, at that time. But there wasn't really a conversation about whether we'd like to see possibilities of segmenting off something for affordable housing, or if we wanted to be thinking about moving forward with affordable housing, and also looking at the project as a whole. And so what we've come back, or what, what staff is planning to come back for us is, is a master plan, sort of like a high-level statement. But we already have done this process, as you've brought up several times. And so I don't really want to sit for three months and have another master plan drawn up if that's not really gonna help us make decisions. And so my, my question is gonna be, can we get a little bit more clarity? Can we get a little bit more detail on what we want staff to be doing and bringing forward for us so that we can make decisions a little bit more quickly?
All right, Mr. Manager, question. Are you looking for us to design this? Like, what, what do you exactly need from council that hasn't already been done?
We don't have a request of council. We, I agree that based on conversations I've had with several of you individually, there seems to be, there seems to be some disagreement about how much or how independently we should be looking specifically at affordable housing right now. As, as I've shared with many of you individually and comfortable saying publicly that at this point, affordable housing shows up in two different places in the direction that I believe we got at the June 5 work session. One is that should our conversations with NC Preservation open opportunities for the Milton Small Building to be repurposed as affordable housing, that that is certainly something we feel the council wants us to fully explore and highlight options for you there. Secondly, as we bring different staff resources to the table to create sort of a high-level master plan or master plan concepts, for your consideration, obviously, on the site, that there is a extremely clear expectation that affordable housing be a part of that. I have received comments from some council members around whether or not, independent of those two things, there are conversations going on directly with, or being solicited directly with affordable housing developers, or entertaining future conversations. And at this point, my response has been, no, we did not perceive that to be part of the conversation. My, my, my opinion of re-watching the meeting is that was discussed and that I did not feel like we got direction. I welcome clarity from council if that needs to be the direction. And I think, should you have another conversation, I would seek again to see if we have a consensus on council or a majority on council that wants that to be the case. So.
I have a question for our colleagues that were here before, the four of us. So Freeman, Middleton, and Caballero. Based on what, I mean, the three, I'm talking about the four of us who are not here. The three of you all that were here, based on the conversation that we're discussing now, how is this different than what's already happened?
So if I might, Mr. Mayor, I, I think we're doing it again. We are, we're getting into mission creep again. I would, I would just remind my colleagues that we got here because when we reached a decision point, based upon the five priorities that we had agreed upon, we, at the last minute, changed the sale of the land. We, and that punted, and that added more time to the decision point. The last meeting that we had, the June meeting, as I recall, there's no, I don't really see it as ambiguous. We did have a lot of conversation, but the final, where we landed was looking at breaking out the Milton Smalls Building, which could be purposed for affordable housing, or could be purposed for other things. But breaking that out and looking at a master plan. And I think we also talked about perhaps the exploration of some interim programming as well to combat blight. So we were clear on that. What's happened is some of us have had conversations with activists in groups, many of which I'm a member of, that some of us feel beholden to, and we are. And, and, and I don't want to confuse the conversation we had subsequent to that meeting and use that to cast kind of confusion about what we said that day. I was clear what we came with on that day. What's happened is some of us have had subsequent conversations, which is fine. And, and my inclination, my, my recommendation would be, we've charged the staff with, from that day, any conversations that we want to have about augmenting or doing anything. I think we should have to give the staff opportunity to do what we've already asked them to do at that June meeting.
I'm sorry, just before that, like before we were on council, which y'all did in 2019, 2020.
We had, yeah, we had the five priorities, which, which, and y'all remember the five priorities. Those five priorities are what informed the RFPs that came back. Those RFPs were, kept fidelity with those five priorities. When we were prepared to vote on one of those RFPs, which I contend then, I contended then, I contend now, would have given basically everybody what they wanted. We would have had the building, we had affordable housing. The contention was, rather than The contention was, rather than sell it, which would have given us the financial windfall, which was one of our priorities, we decided to lease. That was the trigger point which sent it back to the staff. So before that, it was the five priorities that informed the, I see, I'm finishing, that informed the RFP. For me, the master plan, if we move forward, and affordable housing is always going to be at 505 West Chapel Hill Street, that's non-negotiable. If we move forward with doing affordable housing first and now, I would just caution us, that now becomes a neighborhood. The master plan is a plan. So when folk move into that neighborhood, and years later, we tell them, well, this was really part of a master plan, we're going to put a hotel here now, or something like that. This is the beauty of master plans. You advertise what you're going to do at the beginning, you do it in one fell swoop. Because those folk who now live in that neighborhood, they will be a neighborhood, and they may not want the master plan at that point. They may not care what we talked about four or five years prior to that. So the master plan now becomes, you know, a plan, and the whole idea of, if we're going to do the affordable housing piece then, first, then we need to remember that the master plan is just that, a plan. And I would want the voices of the people that live there to be honored when we're going to, you know, do their thing. Well, you can breathe, this is my first time really talking at all today, so I've been very patient. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I think I'm just, it's still, I'm, go ahead.
He was, I think, trying, it wasn't just the five items, I mean, the five goals were the five goals, but the, you're trying to get to some of the history pre, when you were on council, is that?
Right, which I think the five, so you guys came, you did, it was the process of getting to those five items.
The process was, there was a community engagement back in 2017, at this point, right? And so those were the five priorities that the mayor pro tem has identified. There was a, there was a decision by council. It's that the original entity retracted, right? So like, I think that that's a missed point.
The Valen Group?
Yeah, it was the Valen Group. We were going to sell the land, because there was, it was, it was, the value was good enough at that time, right? That was the initial economic premise. That economic premise does not exist in the same way. And we saw that in subsequent proposals. The initial response did not require city subsidy to do anything, if I'm not mistaken. The economic headwinds, for many reasons, completely changed, and that is why I think we have struggled. Now, the mayor pro tem is correct that subsequent proposals, there have been other things, but in the fall of 2019, if I'm not mistaken, a decision was made by council, a vote was taken, a group was decided on, and a proposal was decided on as well. And that proposal fell through, not because of any decision, or lack of decision, or changing of a decision by a council, right? Post that, yes, correct, there have been decisions that have changed and waffled, but we would have had a building built by this point, if that initial developer hadn't pulled out of the, out of the deal. So I just want to correct that, so that the folks are clearly aware, no, there was a decision, there was a vote, there was a process. To, just to the whole conversation, I am open to having, and I said this to council member Cook before, I am open to having a conversation. I've also said, because during my one-on-one with the city manager, we had this conversation, I want to go watch that meeting. I need time to go watch that meeting. I'm, you know, folks were saying there was some clarity, there wasn't some clarity, it's what I said to council member Cook. Council member Cook, at our subsequent work session, if I don't feel like, to your point, that it was, there wasn't clear direction, I'm open to having that conversation on the 9th. If I, like, so, I'm not prepared to provide you an answer, and I wasn't prepared to really provide an answer before the work session. So that's where I'm at. I've also met with advocates, and that, what I have said to advocates is, I would raise it with the city manager. I have done my due diligence on that part. My next step is to watch a meeting and see what was the guidance or not, and that is where I am as an individual council member. So I'm not prepared to answer your request. I would like to wait to the next work session, which is the 18th, right, I think? And then, open to having something on the 9th, if I feel like, yeah, there is something we need to provide staff, or it's clear where we landed.
If I could just run quickly to councilmember Cook, yours, because I don't think anything you've said is controversial, I agree with everything you said. The only thing I would, I would, I think more clarification is that, the decision not to sell was not an economic-based decision. It was predicated upon the notion that, in order for us to maintain control, and to get what we actually want in terms of affordable housing, that we needed to own it. That was not an economic argument. It was an argument based upon the belief that, the only way we can assure that we'll be affordable housing, is that if we own the land. That was the reason for pulling it at that, at that last meeting. But I just want to clarify that. I yield.
Yeah.
Actually, can we?
I just have a question for the manager, so if you had any input on the conversations happening. Yeah, so my question is just, what would we expect for the meeting on the, you know, the November 20th? What would we expect?
Sure. So I would hope by then, that we could provide some context. So comments were made at the June 5th work session, on behalf of or by Preservation North Carolina, that a significant factor in the rehabilitation of the Milton Small Building has not been part of our consideration, because we were talking to master developers, and not talking to historic preservation developers. They, they made an overture to the council that, that should the council be interested, they would work with staff to identify more refined proposals for that building, that we could then vet, I think with our partners, HRNA being one of our critical partners, to, to come back and give you an assessment if we, if we believe that to be credible, that portioning off the Milton Small Building, going straight for a proposal on that building. So I think by November 20th, we could provide significant context for that. We're having conversations both directly with NC Preservation, with groups who have worked with NC Preservation, and with our private consultants, all of which we are trying to coalesce into our typical sort of, hopefully unbiased analysis for you, as to, is this really something that's different, and meaningfully different than what we've experienced in our prior efforts? So I think we'd have an answer for you on that. Then, I think we would be able to share with you concepts and ideas from your professional staff, around what a physical plan for that site might look like, if we were to, rather than a master developer say, here's what I want to do with that site, if we were to say, you know, here are ideas and uses based on your comp plan, based on conversations you've had, based on feedback from the public we've heard, based on the priorities that the council has said. So I'd like to bring back what I still think would be a high-level, not a highly specific, master plan for the property. And then, as a subset of that, that would include concepts for activating the space, because I think what was central to our June 5 conversation, is the staff recommendation was that, based on prior conversations from council, we did not think doing anything quickly on that site was advisable, given the development climate. So I think you heard that and said, yes, we gave some option, I think we heard you say yes, but again, I'm open for you revising that, or telling us we heard that wrong. So we would bring some ideas for what it might look like to have interim uses on that site. So I think that is what we feel could be ready in November. Any meeting you have prior to that, I'm very comfortable with us sharing what we know to date, in all of those areas. I just am not comfortable saying that work would be complete sooner than that November date. I'm going to invite DCM Probes, who's leading most of this effort, to see if I have overstated any of those summaries.
Gina Probes, and very rarely wrong, but I will just add that there are meetings underway right now. Tomorrow, there's a meeting with Preservation, the Preservation staff as well. So the work is, while it's not completely visible, that this work is going on, along with interventions with Parks and Rec, Planning Department, and we're also meeting with our new Office of Economic and Workforce Development Director, who's new to us now, to talk about those interventions of this space, that could be short-term, maybe long-term, come back with cost proposals, especially as we look at what is or isn't going to happen in the marketplace in the next year or so, and we're aware, one option may be that we will still be holding on to it and doing things, and to activate the space, minimize the blight, and hold on to our asset, and use it while other activities are underway.
Thank you. So basically, you're investigating what are the potential, you know, opportunities on the site? That's an ongoing process. By November 20th, there'd be a very high level, here's kind of what we've explored, here's the direction, and some options, potentially some options?
Yes.
And then, as part of that, do you anticipate, and was this something that you heard, potential partitioning of this larger, other than just the Milton Small Building, partitioning as one of those options?
Possibly.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. That's my question.
Let me just go to councilmember Freeman, first.
Thank you. I was just going to say that I tend to agree with councilmember Caviaro. I'm not opposed to the conversation, but I will say, I will not be here on the 9th. And I'd like to be here for the conversation, so I'd hope you find a different day. And then also add, there's a long laundry list of all of the documentation that's occurred for this project on the website, and I encourage everyone to take a look at that. It's extensive, because I think in 2017, the decision was made, and then in 2019, the building became empty. And I know there was a lot of activity about what should happen with the building externally, and that activity has continued. And so I have not met with anyone following up on this from our meeting in June. And so it's interesting, but I do want to make sure that the historic preservation piece is investigated to the fullest, and whether it's affordable housing or not, I want to be clear, like, I want that process to continue and be done. I will say that there's not much difference between the 9th of October and November 20th, except an election, and so I'm open to whatever needs to happen, whether we have the conversation beforehand or not. I've been an advocate for partitioning from the very beginning. That was, I was in the minority, and went with the majority on moving forward with acreage in the beginning, so. If we were to move forward with partitioning, I would be excited to see a piece of it, you know, taken off for affordable housing. Or in the Milton Small Building, but I think until the historic preservation piece is explored, we won't know whether that is. I don't think it's a, like, I don't think it's a problem if it doesn't, if you have affordable housing in both, but I do want to make sure that staff is focused on getting, getting what they need to get, so that on October 20, on November 20th, we can make a decision on whether or not we'll move forward with Preservation North Carolina or not.
Okay, thank you. I forget, I don't really have that.
Yeah, I just want to be really clear about what I'm asking for, so, and this is like, we're pretty much doing it now, which is not what I, what I wanted, was for us to be prepared to do it in a few weeks. I don't want to rehash what happened at the last meeting, I'm not interested in doing that again, and if we had the right takeaways, or if we didn't, like, I'm not interested in that. I don't feel beholden to anyone I've met with. What I want is for, when this comes up again in late November, which is quite some time away, for us to have the information that we need to be able to make a decision. And so if there, to that extent, if there are more things that we would like to see from staff, and I will say, this is more detail than I had understood was coming in front of us in November. So prices around activation, inside activation, I didn't know that that part was going to be coming before us. So that is already more information, but if there, if we want to have specific information on like, costs around moving forward on an affordability piece, and these other things, like, I would just want us to go ahead and have that information ready, so that we can make a decision in a more efficient, economical way. That's my only point in bringing this up now, is not to like, make any major decisions, but I also, like, I don't want to have to redo the plans, we've already redone the plans a million times, and so if we are going to go a different route, I feel like we should talk about it sooner rather than later, instead of letting all the time slip by, and then not getting the information that we need to make the decision. So that's my point in bringing it.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, councilmember Cook, I hear you on the urgency, I feel the same pressure, you know, that we sort of, this is one of these things that's sort of taken so long, so I sense the urgency. I also agree with you that, like, I'm not interested in sort of going back and rehashing what's happened in the past, we need to move forward on this project. So to have a meeting in October, and then want to get in November, may not be as efficient, I think, but again, I sense the urgency. If we can do this before the 20th of November, let's do that, right? If the staff is saying they can't do it before then, then we may be stuck with that, but I'd say, let's do it as soon as we can. I think what you were asking for in part was just an update, right? A way to sort of find out more and give input, right? So if there, if staff, if what staff is saying is, we'll have information and proposals and options to really look at and to give guidance on, on the 20th, I think that's a productive conversation to have. If we can have that sooner, all the better. If not, let's do it on the 20th, so.
Yeah, pro tem, before I go, since we're talking about that, that's exactly what I was going to say. And I, yes, there is an election between then and there, I don't really care about that, for me, it's the information. I don't want to have a conversation just to have a conversation, I want to make sure we have all of the information prepared. And so I'm along the same line. What I want to make sure, the next time we have this conversation, as that conversation happens, we are making a decision on where we're going, or, you know, or at least determining the next meeting to make a decision, a hard decision to go forward with. I don't want to talk just to talk, we've been doing a lot of that. That's why I asked for the institutional history on it. So let me go to Middleton, now.
Thanks. Just real quickly, one, yeah, I don't want to rehash the last meeting either. The only reason that I think is operational is because there seemed to be some suggestion that there was ambiguity at the last meeting. That's why we're talking about what actually happened, so that's rehashing. And secondly, I, for me, to councilmember Cook's point, the more, that November 20th meeting, that's what it's going to do for me. That's going to give me the information to have, to weigh options, because for me, even if we, if we wanted to do a standalone affordable housing piece, I'm not going to support building affordable housing, brand-new apartments, and when they look out their window, they see a blighted Milton Smalls building. I mean, to me, what is absolutely critical is the disposition of that building first, because, you know, if it's still looking the way it is, and we're building affordable housing, who wants to live in a neighborhood like that, where that's where they're looking out the window? So that high-level presentation from the staff on November 20th, is the jump-off point for me, to do exactly what you've suggested. That will give me at least a starting point for what it looks like to break off that building. If we're going to do a standalone piece, what will we be doing, and what will the neighborhood look like if we do that? So for me, that November 20th meeting accomplishes that, all that we've said, for me, so.
Councilmember Cook, do you feel with the information that staff has provided? I hear what councilmember Riss said, I think staff has heard it clearly. If they can come sooner, please come sooner. But now that you've had that kind of update, that there's more information than maybe you initially thought, can we just, like, if they can come sooner, great, if not, can we just say it's going to happen on November 20th? Do you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I absolutely feel comfortable with the timeframe. I just want to make sure that the level of detail for us to actually make a decision is before us, and previously, the only words I've heard are high-level, 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 and I've just now heard, oh, we'll actually look at portioning it off, we'll actually, and I hadn't heard that before. And so I don't know, I don't, I don't know exactly what we're going to get, because those, those words don't feel very descriptive to me, so that's been my only concern, is just that we, we provide guidance, so that when we get here in November, and we have the preservation piece, and we have everything, we will have all of the pieces in front of us that we need.
Does staff feel like they've heard from council what we're hoping for that presentation, whether it happens November 20th or sooner?
Well, just because of the, again, the conversations about how much detail or how much isn't, you know, I think we will be prepared to vet for council, and analyze for council, the offer or claims made by Preservation Durham. So I'm describing that as high-level, because that will not be, you will not have a development proposal to vote on, you will not be looking at proposals, so I have described that as a high-level overview, but I do think, you know, we will be in a position to say, this seems like a viable option if council's choice is to subdivide, and so then you could give us that direction, and say, yes, pursue a development proposal. I do think, I want to be clear, I do think the master plan will be very high-level. So I don't, I just, in this question of what will be actionable, I would rather under-promise and over-deliver, than leave any of you with the notion that there will be, you know, very specific action items on the 20th, because I think what you asked us for is, go talk to NC Preservation and see if this seems viable. So I think that, that's what I took as our direction. So I just, to councilmember Cook's concerns about whether or not there, we will be ready for action on the 20th, I don't want to over-promise that and say, yes. I do think all of the detail that Gina provided- I do think all of the detail that Gina provided will, is under that umbrella of, we hope to inform your next steps. Whether or not there are next steps on the table at the 20th, I don't want to commit to that. I'm not sure you're comfortable with us committing to that.
Can I keep going? Yeah, so do you feel, based on that, I'm just, because you're the one who brought it, so I just want to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not, I feel like we're talking in circles, like, I don't feel like I've gotten the answer that I want, like, will we have tangible things to look at and make a decision outside of the preservation piece? And it sounds like maybe no.
I don't think we.
And, and so, like, that is what, that's what my, been, my only request is, like, we're going to get this preservation piece, I understand the timing on that, it sounds like it might not come back to us before November, that's totally fine. I want to be able to have the information when I make a decision, but I also want to have some other pieces too, so that we can talk about on the November 20th meeting, oh, are we going to segment off the Milton Small Building? Are we also going to segment off for affordability? Are we, like, or are we going to keep it all together? And are we going to move forward on one piece first? Are we going to phase it, like, these are decisions that I'd like to make sooner rather than later? And I just don't feel like I'm, I, I understand that that information will come in front of us at that time.
I think that's to be determined. I mean, I, listen, I share your frustration, but we don't have any, the decision point, that ship has sailed. When we had the RFPs, we said we're not going to deal with peevils anymore. I think we have to resolve ourselves that we have set the clock back on this project. And November, the short answer to your question is, no, I don't think we're going, maybe, well, the easy answer is maybe. I mean, it depends upon what the staff brings, but I, I don't think that we ought to be under any illusion that any quick decisions are going to be made on that property, because that ship has already sailed. We, we don't have any RFPs out, we don't have any proposals, it'll be high level, and, and we're just going to have to tell folk the truth that we are not maybe at the total beginning, but we have added time to this project, and we want to get it, I'd rather get it right than quick.
Let me, go ahead, you got your hand up.
I just wanted to appreciate, I felt like there was more than just the Milton Smalls building. I appreciate what DCM Probst shared, I'm comfortable with that, I look forward to that conversation. I think that, you know, we, we've said that there's urgency, and we understand you also have lots of other things going on. So if it can come before November 20th, great. If it doesn't, I feel comfortable with what staff has shared, and that's just where I'm at. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's pretty much what I was going to say. I think staff has the message that let's move urgently. But I, I don't want to have a meeting earlier with not enough information. When we do meet, I want as much information as possible, so that we can give guidance on then going into a decision-making process on how we move forward. So I think the message is clear. Okay? Were there other matters?
Yes, I had another one. So I am, I've talked to everybody about this at some point in time, maybe not today, but the staff has done some research on the wildlife feeding ordinance that y'all might remember, some folks came up and were talking about the squirrels in there. Yeah, the squirrels and the deer and all of their wildlife in their neighborhood. And so the attorney and I have met, talked about what an ordinance might look like, and so I would like to bring that forward just for, to address that council, or that, excuse me, that constituent request. And I'm happy to put that on the next work session, or two work sessions from now, whatever the attorney thinks is the right amount of time for that conversation to happen.
Well, I think there's some staff feedback as well, so I kind of want to defer to the manager on how he wants to bring that forward.
Per our conversation yesterday, we're, we're prepared to report out on the, the information that the Housing and Neighborhood Services, formerly NIS Code Enforcement Staff, collected over the summer. My recommendation in a conversation that the attorney and I had, that this might go into parts, that we bring you the feedback on what other communities are doing and how it might look in Durham, and then if council's decision is to move forward with an ordinance, that that, that the attorney would bring the ordinance forward, we can do it like that. Or if council's direction is to bring an ordinance with the staff report, you can give us that direction today. Either way, we are certainly prepared to bring the staff feedback forward, and the staff is already preparing the agenda item for that. So I guess the only clarity we need is, do you want the ordinance with it, or would the ordinance follow a council conversation?
I don't feel strongly about this, I do think that the ordinances are pretty straightforward, so I don't think there's, I don't think that y'all are going to see something that's going to really surprise you out of that. I do think we could probably talk about both at the same time, but if folks feel more comfortable having the staff report first and then the ordinance second, it doesn't matter to me.
I would love the staff report. I haven't, I know we talked about it, I remember vaguely, I, I'm not prepared to say whether the actual staff report is going to inform better or not the actual ordinance, but I see less purpose for the staff report if we're coming with the ordinance to make a decision on the following meeting. So I'd like a staff report, and then go with the ordinance. That would be my position.
Yeah, I just, the only thing is that I don't want us to talk about things that we aren't going to put in our ordinance, right? Because the staff report's going to be, I think, a little bit broad, and so I just want to make sure that we kind of taper it down to like, the things that we're actually going to talk about. So we, what we could do, I think, is have the staff report in the next work session, and we could already have a draft of the ordinance at that time, so that folks can kind of see what's relevant, and then we could actually put it on for the ninth as a full discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'll follow you guys' lead on it, I'm, I'm okay either way, I, but I do want to see the staff report before I even think about shaping an ordinance.
Okay, so can we do the staff report in one work session and then have the ordinance conversation in the work session following?
Yeah, I'm cool with that.
Great.
We'll have that on the 18.
Those are all of my matters.
I think we're ready to settle.
All right, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, council members. To settle the agenda, on consent, we have items two through 20, and on GBA, item one. Or, yes, item one.
Item one, that says the appointment.
Yes.
All right, entertaining motion to settle the agenda?
Move to settle.
Second.
All right, it's moved to probably second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all so much. We are adjourned at four, seven. I can't see, oh, right, 4:37. I saw, I saw a four. You know, I really worked hard this meeting, guys, I'm going to have to take a break, but please, let's get downstairs, see you little, at the Armory, 510 is our photo, 510, our photo for audit services, and 543, our photo for the mayor's Hispanic Latino Council.
That's specific to you, man.
Oh, sorry.
But thank you.
Everybody go to the Armory.